This is for July 28, 2002. The hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Executive Order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. The hearing is also being live streamed. In order to ensure this hearing is, of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted and asked to comment. As with our input meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as followed: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx Event Platform. To raise your hand, click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your meeting, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon, and your hand will be vertically raised. Click it again, and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hands as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Before we start, I'd like to get a roll call of members, Board members. Mark Fortune?
Madam Chair.
Mark Ehrlich? Mark Ehrlich, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Joe Roggerio?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ed Devoe, are you on?
He's on, Madam Chair, but he's currently muted.
I am on, I apologize.
Thank you. Tyrone, are you on? Okay, one, two, three, four. Therefore, we have a five-member board. Any applicants until we hear from Mr. Canell, any applicants to be aware that we have a five-member board, and to get approval of a project, you need all five members in the board. You can, when your case is called, request an administrative deferral if you feel this is not in your best interest. Can we, Mr. Fortune, could we start with the extensions, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the first extension into the record, calling case BOA 648-704, 1857 to 1859 Dorchester Avenue. Name and address for the record, please. Madam Chair, this expired on June 30 of 2020, and if they do get another extension, it would be their second.
I'm sorry, when did it expire? June 20?
June 30 of 2020, and it already had one extension, so if they do get another extension, this would be their second. Name and address for the record, please.
Just to remind applicants that we are expecting projects that we approved two, three years ago, four years ago to proceed. So, may I have the applicant on the line, please?
I don't see the applicant present, I just see some raised hands.
Is Mr. Cludia there? He's probably very, he's usually pretty good. Okay, may I have a motion, please, for one deferral?
Make a motion for a deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you need a date, Madam Chair? No?
Yes, please. One year, right? As we usually do.
Was it a deferral or an extension?
I'm sorry, this is an extension of one year.
It was a deferral that was mentioned in the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's listed on the, on the agenda as an extension.
I thought we were just going to defer.
Motion was a deferral.
Oh, yeah, let's, oh, sorry, may I have a motion for extension and a one-year extension?
Mr. Roggerio is going to have to rescind his motion.
I rescind my motion for deferral.
Okay, one-year extension.
I'd like to make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 543-185-344-Bremen Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Please put your name and address on the record.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, yes, please put your name.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, requesting a one-year extension. The last extension, this last expired on March 30 of this year. We're asking for a one-year extension to March 30, '21. Although it did expire on March 30, I would point out that under the Governor's order, all variances and approvals that were in effect at the time the Governor's order went into effect were told during that period for additional time, so we did make our request during that, during that executive order.
And what's the reason, and how many extensions have you had so far?
This, I, this appears to be the first extension, Madam Chair.
Okay, and, okay, and the reason for the extension?
We're finalizing plans and details. This involves some Conservation Commission issues that we're working through. We believe we'll have this wrapped up within the next six to eight weeks, and I know that the design part of this process has also been completed.
Okay, may I have a motion for extension?
Madam Chair, just for the record, Madam Chair, for the record, it did expire on March 30, 2020, and this would be their first extension. I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
Thank you.
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 687-533-51 Breed Street. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Richard Lins again, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. This matter originally expired, most recently expired on June 30 of this year, and has been extended once previously. The developers in the process of finalizing the plans through design review, a very complicated site that required a lot of engineering. We expect to have permit, hopefully permit this fall.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, just for the record, it did expire on June 30. It would be their second. I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I believe the next three cases are combined. I'm not sure if the, if the Counselor could tell me if Bennington Street is involved in this particular, next three addresses?
All of the Maverick Street, Mr. Secretary, are part of the same address, 173 to 177 Maverick, home included.
Okay, I'm going to call those into the record, calling BOA 825-473-173 to 177 Maverick. There are two companion cases, case BOA 825-475-175 Maverick and BOA 825-478-177 Maverick. Madam Chair, these all expired on July 13 of this year, and they've already had, this would be their first extension. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, also going through and finalizing the design for this building. There has been some analysis as to whether or not this could be rehabbed or needs to be taken down. We're finalizing that with the engineering, and we intend to have a decision on that within the next, next few weeks.
Next two weeks. Is the BPDA fully functional, then?
So, the BPDA has, has already been reviewing this through the design review. If we decide that we ultimately want to take the building down, there are some steps that we'll need to take with the design review, but we want to obviously preserve the improvements.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 579-100-931-Bennington Street. Madam Chair, this also expired, I'm sorry, yes, this also expired on July 13 of 2020. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this involves a change of use and occupancy, which is the lesser of the concern here. This also has some renovations to an existing gas station retail location, and they're in the process of still finalizing the plans to address what was raised as part of the community process.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, BOA 759-563-8-Marginal Street. This also, this is going to expire on December 15 of 2020. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. The Secretary indicated this does expire at the end of this year. They are in the process of finalizing, but this also involves Conservation Commission because of the parcel that's located very close to the water. So, in anticipation of hopefully having that done, we just wanted to ensure that we request timely, and we're hoping for a one-year extension on this as well.
So, may I have an extension from, well, from, from the, from the December date, please?
Motion for a one-year extension from the date of the expiration in December.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, because it's extensive amount of cases here, I'm going to call into the record the first case to the last case and give the address, if that's okay with the Chair?
That is perfect.
All right, Madam Chair, the first case, calling case BZC 25996, 11th Senator Bowling Circle, to case BZC 26024, 60th Senator Bowling Circle. Madam Chair, there are 30 cases total. Madam Chair, these all expired on October 18 of 2019. Name and address for the record, please.
This is Attorney Joseph Feaster for the Law Firm of McInnes &amp; Associates, 183 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Mr. Feaster, that's what's read into the record. This, all these cases, all these applications expired, and this puts us in a very difficult position of approving something that has been expired. Can you please explain?
Yes, yes, let me through that, Madam Chair, and I, and certainly, it is, I understand the Board's processes, but what occurred here, and I just want to take the Board back to its original granting of this development project back in July of 2005. This was 99 units of housing that were built, and they're built on spec by the developer having person to want houses built based upon spec, so they don't just build the houses out. Besides the financing issues and the circumstances, there are only nine to 10 parcels that remain in this. Now, regrettably, the developer did not contact me, missed the date for, for when their extension expired, and I did in fact file this belatedly in terms of May of this particular year. Now, some of that was as a result of conversations, we're trying to get the appeal in as a result of the coronavirus. I don't have an excuse here, but I do ask the Board's indulgence on here, this is a product, a development in Dorchester, wide community support on the state hospital grounds, and the circumstances here is just inadvertent oversight on the fact of not making the request for an extension for that period of time. I also, if the Board is generous enough and desirable of doing that, one of the things that I, is clear here, I know the Board likes to do one-year extensions, and I certainly would welcome that, but the reality of this in this market, in this climate, et cetera, unless the Board wants us to be making this request each and every year, the likelihood of these nine to 10 lots being developed in that period of time is unlikely or remotely likely, and I would look if the Board is generous enough to grant us an extension at all since we're making a request after the date has passed, the Board might look at a longer period of time, because unfortunately, the method of trying to track the extensions is oftentimes done in the developer's shop, and so therefore, these inadvertent occurrences of not getting the requesting timely might occur in the future. So, that's my request, Madam Chair.
Counselor, I think I'm sympathetic to your request. So, did you mention that this was, the first application came in in 2005?
Yes.
Yes, and I have to say, I recently drove by the site, and it looks like construction is, is proceeding. The, the, the thing that I'm really absolutely concerned about is the precedence that this sets. Honestly, I'm very sympathetic to the developer. I know the, the state hospital site very well, and I completely understand it, but this puts us as the Board in a terribly awkward position. So...
May I speak to that before you rule?
Yes.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, I understand the circumstances which this request puts you in, but I know that it has always been the Board's position that nothing is precedent to, in the sense of what it might do. I guess I, I'm throwing myself on leniency of the Board because, because no, as a practitioner, I, and I think that what I will do is take over responsibility if the Board grants this extension to ensure that within our system, and I believe Attorney Frazier's on as well, that we will track this, because the communication sometimes, once we move past the zoning and with the developer, is non-existent until certain circumstance like this occurs. So, I recognize the quandary that this request puts the Board in, but I hope that the Board will be lenient enough to grant at least a one-year extension from the date of the October date, and I'll be certain I'll be coming right back, turning around, making another request if that is granted.
Okay, so, I need to...
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Please.
You said that these lots are being built on spec so that they're only, so that you really don't know when they might be built. Is it possible for, for you to just grant the extensions on the projects that you know are coming up in the near future and then withdraw on the others and then reapply as, as they become active? It just seems like you're asking us for an open-ended blank check.
Mr. Ehrlich, not really, and I wish I had the exact number of the lots that, because even on the list which was written by Mr. Fortune, many of those parcels are, have housing on it at the present time. I think your point is definitely well-taken. As I was, was pointed out to me by the developer, is that there are only about eight to 10 lots which are, which are still undeveloped. So, I, if, if you're asking that you want certain addresses, you'd be happy to provide the Board with it. I don't have that information right now, but even as I look at the lists of, of certain addresses, I know that those particular lots are in fact, have houses built on them, and they are occupied.
Okay, so...
In other words, you're saying that some of the ones that are before us actually don't need extensions because they're already complete?
That is absolutely correct. This was just a matter of the entire listing, just wanted to be, be complete in, in providing information, current, well, not current, information to the Board, but that is absolutely correct, Mr. Ehrlich. There is only about eight to 10 lots that are, have not been developed.
Okay, so, given that information, I honestly, Counselor, we, honestly, I mean, this is breaking my heart, because I know how important Boston State Hospital is, but I would request a motion for denial, because if it's eight to 10 lots, I'm sure that it would be fairly easy to clean the record, get everything off that's already done, and come in with those specific cases so the record is clean, and you can start with a clean slate, starting with two years, two years automatically. So, may I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sorry, Mr. Feaster.
No, thank you, Madam Chair and members, just one question to the Chair, is this, does this require that they, that they start, start anew? Is that what this does? Or, I'm just not sure what the motion does. I know it doesn't grant the extension, but customarily, when that's done, you have to start anew and start the process going through the community process, is that what's intended here?
Counselor, I, can you check in, if you don't mind, with the CBA staff? I know Ed.
Certainly.
Only because we'd love to talk this through with you.
Okay.
Given the fact that this is online, it, it's been a little challenging to give everybody the attention that they need.
All right, well, thank you so much for giving the attention this morning, thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'm assuming that that was the denial without prejudice, so that Mr. Feaster can forward immediately.
Absolutely, yes, let's clarify the record, it's denial without prejudice.
Thank you, Ms. Ehrlich.
Madam Chair, calling the next case, calling Board Final Obiter, calling BOA 820-974-29-Chester Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning, my name is Michael Ross, I'm an attorney for Prince Robel, on behalf of the petitioner. So, what we have here is a very finite matter, it relates to the groundwater. What you're seeing on your screen is our letter of no harm from our geotech engineer, Harry Burles, who I think is on the phone somewhere. There's, the issue is, is that this building, 29 Chester Avenue, received zoning relief, including G-Cod relief at its hearing about two years ago. It's under construction, and as we got to the, you know, the difference between the zoning plans and the actual building plans, there was greater detail, of course, and when we got to that greater detail as it relates to the basement garage, and if you could go to maybe the other file so I could show you this, we, yeah, it would be great to just compare, it's just one sheet on each. So, this is the zoning when we peered before you in 2018, you'll just, you know, this is the underground garage, and then if you look at the lower part of this plan, you'll see that there's just a detail on the left, but if you open up the actual construction plan, if you can go back out to the file, yeah, there you go, thank you so much, you'll see at the bottom on that lower right section...
Can you stop for a minute, please? May I have Christian on the line, please, Christian Seminelli?
And while he's, while he's trying to get on, I just want to, we've been working very closely with Christian Seminelli on this matter, we're in agreement.
Hold on a minute, Christian, can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, 229 Berkeley Street.
So, please, please tell us your opinion on this.
So, this case was before you on June 12, 2018, at the time the Board approved it for a G-Cod for the one-inch capture, and it was contingent... And it was contingent upon the architect stating that there was no work that was going to be done below elevation seven Boston City Base, which is the no-harm threshold for G-Cod. After that hearing, as Counselor, Counselor, as Attorney Ross stated, there was a design change by the proponent, which basically, they needed to dig deeper for the type of scissor lift for the cars. As a result, they did work or conducting work, performing work below elevation seven, around elevation three, which required them to de-water. That was essentially in violation of the conditional use permit that was granted by this board. Because if they were going to go below elevation seven, they needed the no-harm letter, which was the first file that Attorney Ross had up on the screen there.
Hey, so what are your thoughts about needing the unanimous vote? I mean, it would be pretty much...
Well...
Who is this? Who just spoke? I, I'd just like just Christian to pat the floor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you continue? So again, since that time, since we discovered that the project was de-watering, they were essentially in violation of the no-harm requirement. They moved very quickly. We have the no-harm letter from the engineer as Attorney Ross was the first, that was the first file that, that was shown. We're comfortable moving forward that the project will have no negative impact once they come up out of the ground. In addition, the project engineer, Harry Burles, who is on this line, is also monitoring the water levels in the area throughout the work. And then one month post-construction, which again, is what would have been required at the time of the 2018 hearing. So in a nutshell, we're comfortable moving forward. The proponent's been very responsive and acted quickly, really to remedy this violation.
Excellent. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Before the hearing starts, I'd like to, to state that we now have a six-member board. Therefore, any, all applicants need to be, to know that they need five members in support of their proposal for the, for the motion to carry. Thank you. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for the 10 o'clock cases. Are there any withdrawals or deferrals? Madam Chair, we do have a withdrawal, so I'm going to read that into the record. Case BOA 1003594, 138 Trenton Street. So I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is that, that not the withdrawal?
It's a withdrawal.
Okay, may I have a second on that?
Second, Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10 o'clock?
Yes, I, hold on. Is Alaska Street?
Yes, hello? Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Who is it?
This is Attorney Derek Small.
Okay, thank you. Please put your name and address on the record and tell us what case...
Could we get the address for Madam Chair so we can call it into the record?
Okay, my name is Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address on 51 Dodson Road, Rantry, Mass.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt the counsel?
Okay. Please, please, Mr. Secretary, go on the record.
I need to know what the address is.
Alaska Street.
Okay, could you hold on two seconds? For the record, calling BOA 1053415, 14 Alaska Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. Business address of 51 Dodson Road in Rantry, Mass. Seeking the administrative deferral for 14 Alaska Street.
I'm sorry, Mr. Small. We now have a six-member board, so you're still requesting a deferral?
Yes, we will still take the deferral. That's fine.
Is there a reason for this request? Is there a reason for the request?
Yeah, we, the city council, Kim Janey, would like us to have one more meeting in the community.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer?
Please, who, who made that motion?
Ed DeVault.
Thank you.
Second, Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, hold on two seconds, please. We have a date of October 6.
At 11:30.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Yes, Jeremy, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Jeremy Sears, with a business address...
Could you give me the address, please?
Right, 229 through 231 Bunker Hill Street.
Thank you. Calling BOA 1048915, 229 to 231 Bunker Hill Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, my name is Jeremy Sears. Business address of 1 Federal Street in Boston. Sitting in, on behalf of Patrick Mahoney, requesting deferral for 229, 231 Bunker Street. We have to correct the refusal letter. We have to have a rear, a rear yard that by leash added. And then obviously, we have to get that advertised as well before we can come back to the board.
And just for the record, Joe Rogierius is recusing himself on this, so we need five members in support. May you have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the record should reflect the fact that Mr. Rogierius refused himself. The date, please.
We have a date of October 6 at 11:30.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Could you please give me the address if you are deferring or withdrawing before you speak?
31 Monmouth.
For the record, calling BOA 1035803, 31 Monmouth Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Madam Chair, requesting a deferral. We have one modification to the project that will go back to ISD for an update. This will actually address a couple of the butters' concerns that were raised during the process.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second, Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You'll have a date of October 6 at 11:30.
437 Frankfurt.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA 1037522, 437 Frankfurt Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner. Again, Madam Chair, requesting a deferral. We are modifying this project to reduce it from four stores to three. We want to...
I'm sorry, please, please repeat that again. I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, we're modifying the project to reduce the height of the building. And Office of Neighborhood Services has asked that we present this again to the community. And we have a scheduled date in August to do so.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second, Tyrone. Second, Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You'll have a date of October 6 at 11:30.
115 Leyton Street.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA 948426, 115 Leyton Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, requesting a deferral. For the purposes of addressing one outstanding item on the issues that were raised by the butters, we believe we can have that addressed for the next couple of weeks.
So what is the issue?
We have adjusted the parking. One of the concerns that we did hear through the process was the number of parking spaces. We've increased the parking. We want to be able to show that to a few of the butters to address their concern.
Okay, is that significant enough for you to have a deferral until, until the fall?
I believe the mayor's office is opposed to this, although I believe the district city council is in support. I think we wanted to have that opportunity to have that one further conversation about this.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there...
Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
We'll have a date of October 6 at 11:30.
Okay, you're all set.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
I see some hands raised, but... I just, to hear from applicants, I know butters are interested in cases, but we, if the, if the applicant, the proponent requests a deferral, we will go ahead and deferral. William Moan, you have been unmuted. Are you the applicant for a project? Please tell me who's on the line.
Madam Chair, I see 116, 120 Moore. Is that being called?
I'm sorry? No, not yet. We just need to figure out if there are any further deferrals. William Moan, you have been unmuted. Mr. Moan, are you here as an applicant for a project of 50 Rogers Street, Ward 7? Mr. Fortune?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair.
I think he's the applicant for 50 Rogers Street.
All right, Madam Chair, well, I'm going to call the first case into the, for the record. And we'll move forward. If there's any deferrals or withdrawals, we'll handle them then.
Okay.
Calling the first case, BOA 1013461, 116 to 120 Moore Street. This is the combined lots and raise the existing building erecting 19-unit residential dwelling with 17 parking spaces. The violation is Article 27T-5. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 8. The use of regulations and MFR use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, a number of allowed stories two and a half is a max. Article 53, Section 9, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient yacht, rear yacht setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yacht setback. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking and loading requirements. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lenz.
Attorney Lenz, if you could wait for one second. Madam, I am going to recuse myself from this matter.
Who is this?
Ed DeVault.
Ed, okay.
All right, thank you.
Let the record reflect the recusal. This means, I'm sure that you need all the, the standing five members in support of this project. This, you can either go ahead or request an administrative deferral.
Madam Chair, we're going to proceed with the five-member board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Richard Lenz, on behalf of the petitioners, Helen Gia and Deborah White. Also with me is Tim Miranda from Embark Studio, the architect on this project. This project is located in the Harborview section of East Boston. And there is a presently a pre-existing multifamily dwelling on the site, which would be a non-conforming use. Our proposal would involve the demolition of the existing multifamily dwelling. This board has also granted relief to allow for a separate four-unit dwelling to be built on an adjacent lot. We would be abandoning those approvals. So there's a total of, right now, would be 13 units approved on the site. We would then combine the lots and erect a single now, where we now be a 14-unit building with parking for 14 vehicles. And the total lot size would be 9,800 square feet. This project would be intended for homeownership. Because we are requesting relief and we are proposing more than 10 units of housing, this would still be subject to the inclusion or development policy. So there would be a total of two IBP units reserved as part of this project.
Can you just text out our names on the... I just... Okay. Please, I see how this works.
Can, can everybody else please be muted? Just a little, Mr. Lenz?
No, I don't believe so. I think someone said...
Jeremy Sears, you're unmuted. Please mute.
On video.
Miss Ambassador, can everybody be muted? From Mr., Mr. Lenz?
Please mute Jeremy Sears.
Who's the ambassador?
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lenz. Can you please proceed, Mr. Lenz?
Yes, thank you. I was muted. I apologize, Madam Chair. So as I said, this is intended for homeownership. And two of the 14 units that are being proposed would be included as IBP units. Just so we can scan to the next slide. Just a quick overview, this is located at the end of Moore Street, closest to the MBTA right away with a mass port property located off, towards the top of the screen. You can go to the next slide, please. Some more close-up view of the existing conditions on the site. You can see the existing multifamily that would be raised in connection with this application. Next slide. Context view of the neighborhood for the area. Next slide. And just a different view as well. You can go to the next slide. Overview.
Can we get to the, to the building layout, etc., please?
Sure. You just keep scrolling down, okay? Next slide. There we go. So, Madam Chair, the ground level here is showing the total of 14 parking spaces. We can see the building outline and the relationship to the buildings to the right. There is no building to the left of this property. There is an open lot that has buildability restrictions on it, so it will remain as open space. You can see the building footprint here that we're proposing. One of the features that we've included is to set back the right side of our building. And you'll see this in the elevation substantially enough from the buildings located at 114 Moore Street. Next slide. Just a rough layout of the units. And I can run through what the units look like. We have a total, as I said, of 14 units. Four of those would be one-bedroom, seven of those are two-bedroom, and three of those are three-bedroom. The two-bedroom units are duplex-style units, so they do have two levels of living. They would be entered on the third level and have the ability to have internal stairwells up to the fourth level. Next slide.
Sorry, how many three-bedrooms and what's the average square footage?
Sure, a total of three, three-bedrooms, just about 1,100 square feet on the square footage. The two-bedrooms are rather generous. Madam Chair, they're about 1,300 square feet. And the one-bedrooms are about 730 square feet.
I'm sorry, and the three bedrooms were 1,100 square feet?
Correct.
Good.
Next slide. We do show roof decks that are included, and they're exclusive to the upper-level units. We come up with a design to avoid inclusion of headhouses. So these would be a more skylight-style hatch to create a lower profile on the upper level of the building. And that was something that was raised through the community process, so we're happy to incorporate that as well. Each of the units, the upper levels, have some outdoor space. You can see some of the decks that are proposed that are shown off the back of the building as well as the front. Next slide.
Okay, see, can we get a closer, is there a closer view of what this building will look like in, when constructed or when proposed to be...
Next slide. I think the next slide is a rendering, Madam Chair. One more. There you go. So I proposed rendering. And again, this was probably our fourth iteration based upon an involved community process, both with the butters as well as the Harborview Neighbor Association. We point out the Harborview Neighbor Association did vote to support this project. We also submitted 52 letters of support. I think you can...
Counselor, we will hear from ONS. But tell us about that lot that's abutting where there are those two figures walking there. Is that part of this proposal?
So that, that lot, portion of that lot is part of this proposal. We do have a setback on that side. The predominant portion of that lot... The predominant portion of that lot, I believe, is controlled either by the Massachusetts Port Authority or the MBTA, uh, and is preserved for open space, so that will remain as open space, no, no structures can be constructed on that lot.
Okay, thank you, can you just stay on the line, um, looking, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lena Tramelli, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the applicant addressed most of the concerns via Butters. The Office of Neighborhood Services received twenty-five letters of support from a Butters and twenty-six letters from members of the Harborview community. Also, the Harborview Neighborhood Association voted in support of this proposal, thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you're calling, please, uh, press, uh, star three, so we can, uh, we know that you're interested in commenting. Anybody else to comment in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have fifty-one letters of support.
Thank you. Anybody on the line to speak either in support or in opposition?
I'm in support.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Deborah Tassanari, one four two Wordsworth Street.
Thank you. Anybody else in support or in opposition? Is Ricardo Patrone on the line? He is, but I muted caller twenty. Um, do you want me to unmute Ricardo first? No, no, please go ahead, who, with whomever you've unmuted. Caller, you're unmuted.
Hello?
Your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Charles Marsola, one seventy-eight Wordsworth Street, East Boston. And, uh, Madam Chair, I am opposed to this particular project, uh, although the, uh, developer on this project, uh, families that have lived in the neighborhood, uh, I think this has been somewhat controversial because of, I think, their impact on the neighborhood as well as the community, they're good people.
Hold on, can you please be specific and tell us what the concern, the, the concern is about the impact? Because this is now, uh, this is now a fourteen residential dwelling with fourteen parking spaces. So tell us the con, the concern is about the impact?
I, I am very much concerned about the impact, this is going to be a four-level, uh, structure. Uh, the neighborhood there is singles and two families with some three, uh, deckers. Um, and the number of units that's there now, the nine units, I think as Attorney Lins mentioned, plus the four units, I think a lot of the letters that people submitted were for the four units that originally was proposed. And I think the neighborhood felt, uh, at least the Butters, and I'm speaking for the Director Butters at four, one fourteen Moore Street, uh, is opposed to this particular project, uh, as is, and I submitted at least fifteen letters of opposition from, uh, Butters on this project, not the neighborhood. Uh, there are a lot of folks in the neighborhood, but it's the reduction of the number of units and the fourth level. Please do not allow them to go up beyond the thirty-five feet that's maximally allowed. Um, you know, this is a two-and-a-half-story, uh, area, uh, and certainly, if you wanted to do three stories, that's fine, but this is just too much for that neighborhood there. One of the Butters says, please do not allow this hotel to be built, uh, in the neighborhood.
Now, this is, this is a residential building, right?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good morning, Ma- Thank you, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The Council would like to go on the record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Um, anyone to unmute, uh, Debbie White?
The applicant, I would like to rebut Mister Marsola's claim that the letters-
So, so, so please, both Debbie White and Helen Gates, since you are the applicants and Mister Lins is representing you, we will, uh, put you on mute, please, and please put your hands down, and we will go to Neighborhood of Butters, uh, to hear from them.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have five letters of opposition.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mister, Mister Tassanari, please?
Uh, my name is Tom Tassanari, and I live at one forty-two Wordsworth Street in East Boston. I also own one forty-four Wordsworth Street in East Boston. My entire family lives in this neighborhood, we are in strong support of this. We, we have, we, we have, we work very closely with the White and Gait families around this community and are in strong support of this project. I know it's four stories, but there are many four stories, five stories going up right now, and nobody seems to be stopping those.
Okay, thank you, anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition? Caller twenty-one, Madam Chair, already spoke, she's four. Okay, caller twenty-one is in, in support. Uh, Mister Lins, a quick rebuttal, please?
Yes, and, you know, and I, I respect Mister Marsola's comments, I know, uh, he's an active member of the Harborview Neighborhood Association, and, uh, we did do a very, uh, you know, ex, ex, extended outreach for this project, we did reach out directly to Director Butters. Um, and in this particular case, I think the evidence is clear from the letters of support that you have. I, I'm not sure what Mister Marsola was referring to, we were very clear, that we were against it.
Counselor, I just want to clarify, because there still seems to be some level of misunderstanding, that there are fourteen residential units and fourteen parking spaces.
That is, that is correct.
All told, all told, there's no additional units, okay?
We, we're demo, we're demolishing the nine, and we're abandoning the four that were permitted, so there are thirteen units essentially allowed on this site presently. We're proposing to simply do this one building, and the, and the benefit to the community, Madam Chair, would be, as a result of this, we have to add two IDP units. So total of fourteen, twelve market, two IDP.
Please stay on the line, Mister Lins, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Uh, ZBA Design Review, uh, BPVE Design Review.
Is there a second?
I second that, Joe Vergiero.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero one nine two two eight fifty-eight Everett Street. This is to extend living space to the basement, the violation is Article twenty-five, section five, flood hazard district. Article fifty-three, section nine, the flood area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Matt Ekel with Drago in Tuscano, the business address of fifteen Broad Street here in Boston. Uh, with me on this call is Attorney Meneger, the applicant for fifty-eight Everett Street. As mentioned, we're seeking to extend living space into the basement for unit one. The project will convert three hundred and fifty-six square feet in the basement of storage space from that private storage space to actual living space for unit one.
Okay, so, so just let me clarify. You are cognizant of the fact that this is a flood hair, flood hazard area, and that no living space is allowed in flood, flood hazard areas. Are you then asking us for relief to allow this space in the basement, where we know clearly ahead of time would be subject to flooding?
Aye, Madam Chair, we do have our elevation certificate completed and approved. Uh, no, that was one of the violations, but we had that done prior to coming before you and prior to going to the community. So that was presented to the community, and it is on the record.
And, uh, so tell us about the elevation certificate, what is the basement elevation on this?
Uh, Madam, give me one moment to pull it up. Uh, that was done by the civil, so I just need to check the numbers, please. So from the top of the floor, Madam Chair, is four-point-eight feet, the top of the next higher floor, it's twelve-point-one feet.
Is, is the BPDA on, on the line, and did the BPDA come in with a recommendation on this?
Uh, yes, Madam Chairwoman, Jeff Hampton from the BPDA. Uh, we recommended denial without prejudice because of the flood.
And why without prejudice versus complete denial?
I'm not sure, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, given the fact this, this is in the, in the flood district, flood hazard area, we have a record of not, um, approving anything that could be subject to flooding, that could possibly put residents at risk. May I have a motion, please?
Madam, Madam Chair, may I request to, to sit, submit the flood elevation to the BPDA and request the deferral, so that could be reviewed?
Absolutely, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second, Ed Devoe.
All those in favor? So, um, very specifically, um, Jeff?
Madam Chair, may I, may I say, for the record, we will not be making another recommendation on this, we only did make one recommendation on each property.
Okay.
I would be happy to spend the letter, the flood, so to get to the record as well.
What I'd love to do, actually, may we just, um, uh, take back that, um, that motion for deferral, let's move to denial without prejudice, so we can have a clean record. Uh, that will give us enough time for anybody who's involved in the technical analysis of it, as far as the BPDA or the other city agencies to give us, uh, an opinion on this, okay?
Uh, I wish Roger motion to defer and, uh, motion to, I will, uh,
Second.
Second, try room.
All the, eager?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine eight one one two two four seventy-one to four seventy-seven Hanover Street. This is a change of occupancy from an existing building from seven units to six units. Interior and exterior modifications, exterior wood decks to be built in the rear of the building. The building once was two buildings that were previously combined, which is why four seventy-one, four seventy-seven Hanover Street. Violation is Article fifty-four, section ten, the flood area ratio is excessive, Article fifty-four, section ten, the rear yard is insufficient, and Article fifty-four, section eighteen, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record.
Steph, can you show us the renderings, please? Cause it looks like the addition is of, uh, rear wood decks and roof deck. Is Tyler Murphy on the line, or Matt, are you, are you?
Madam Chair, can you hear me? I'm representing this as well.
Okay, who is this? Please put your name and address on the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning once again, Attorney Matt Ekel with Drago in Tuscano with the business address of fifteen Broad Street, suite six-ten here in Boston. I am representing Tyler Murphy, the applicant, who is also on this call for four seventy-one, four seventy-seven Hanover Street. The proposal, as mentioned, is to change the occupancy from seven residential units to six residential units, renovate the building and erect rear decks. Uh, the zoning district's a multifamily residential local services sub-district, and the lot size is two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine square feet. In terms of the unit breakdown, we're proposing one one-bedroom unit at six hundred and seventy square feet, two two-bedroom units at about fourteen fifty square feet, and then three three-bedroom units at an average of one thousand five hundred and seventy-five square feet. As mentioned, we do have a few violations, one being floor area ratio, allowed in this area is a three-point-oh. We are proposing a three-point-seven-seven, this is a pre-existing violation at three-point-two-five. Also, we need a rear yard variance, uh, allowed, required, is twelve feet. Currently, we have an eleven-foot rear setback, with the decks, we would have a six-foot rear setback. So the only setback is those decks. Uh, finally, we have a roof structure restriction, because we're proposing to make a full shed dormer as opposed to the, uh, two individual dormers that you can see in the picture that's up right now. So the roof structure restriction is just for the, for that dormer.
And is that, is that in the rear yard?
It's in the rear yard, but it's within the footprint of the, the building already, it's just filling it air portion on the top floor.
Thank you, please stay on the line, Mister Ehrlich, how are the plans?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, couldn't unlock with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services like to go on record in support of this proposal. The Butters' meeting was held back January twenty-seventh and was lightly attended. Uh, the project was also supported by the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, but opposed by the North End Waterfront Residence Association.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The Council would also like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else in support? Anybody to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have five letters of opposition.
Thank you. We have one caller. Please, caller, go ahead, you, name and address on the record. Hi, sir, you've been unmuted? Madam Chair, I'm gonna put it back on mute, he had, he stated earlier that he was in opposition. Thank you. So may I, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, calling the next case, calling BOA nine four nine nine seven five twenty-eight Exodus Street. The work will consist of an addition to a nine-story building. There will be a renovation and addition of a rooftop of approximately four thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet, of which two thousand one hundred and thirty square feet is exposed. The building is non-conforming, in addition, will require relief. The violation is Article fifteen, section fifteen dash one, flood area ratio is excessive. Article sixteen, section one, the building height is excessive. And Article twenty-one dash, sec, section twenty-one dash one, setback requirements. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is James Green, I'm an attorney with Ruben and Rudman at fifty-three State Street, I'm here in the office of Exodus Towers LLC. Also who has signed in is our project architect, Aaron Hodges from Stan Tech. This is a, uh, building at, at the corner of Exodus and Newbury Street, it's an existing nine-story, ninety-six-unit rental apartment building with first-floor retail and restaurant space. The proposal before you is to convert the existing roof, which is not occupied, was only mechanical, into a tenant amenity space, which would be used by the tenants of the building only. The area of the roof which would be exposed is approximately six thousand square feet, and an elevator headhouse must be constructed to provide access to the roof. The, uh, lobby area for the elevator will be about two hundred and ninety-seven square feet, as noticed by the board. The two hundred and ninety-seven square feet is included in FAR, and therefore the resulting violation of FAR. The area, the existing building, as I noted, uh, is located within a B-three sixty-five district in the Back Bay. The existing FAR is five-point-eight-four, the new FAR will be five-point-eight-five, an increase of point zero-one FAR. The height of the building is eighty-one feet, and with the deck, will go, it will increase to ninety-six feet, and the elevator headhouse will increase from a hundred feet to a hundred and eleven feet.
Counselor, just one quick question, um- Counselor, just one quick question, um, some, a question of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
How, is this entire deck going to be exposed or how much of it will be enclosed?
6,000 square feet will be exposed. They'll have furniture and fixtures and decking. And the only FAR area is the lobby area of the elevator for 297 square feet.
Okay, so hold, so please stay on the line. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Uh, the drawings are, are fine as far as I can tell. The one question I have is in the renderings, is that white clad, uh, structure on, on top, is that the, uh, where, where the, the guts of the elevator system, is that what that's for?
The, the elevator headhouse is shown in gray on A30303.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at A901, the rendering.
Maybe, uh, Aaron maybe, I believe that, that might be the cladding of the upper floor of the building because it's brick with a cladding above it. If you can see the great cladding for the.
No, no, I'm looking first, I'm looking at the, the glass, uh, the glass section in the, uh, of the four pictures, the top right one. And then right behind that, there is a gray cladding up above the brick. Is that where the elevator is?
That's correct. That's the elevator headhouse that you'll see.
Okay, that's the elevator headhouse. All right, the drawing, the drawings are, are, are fine, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, secretary here, we have two letters of support.
Thank you. Anybody from the mayor's office or the elected officials to speak in support of this?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is Facee Sharif with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we would like to go on record and support this proposal. It's a modest change to the existing building. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also, sorry, would like to put on the record, uh, that the Civic Association, uh, NAB, is in support of the proposal as well.
Thank you. Anybody from, um, the counselor's office, district counselor's office? Counselor Bach's office? Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, the secretary here, we also have 20 letters of opposition, 23 letters of opposition.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, mine operates representing hundreds of union carpenters and living wardrobes here in Boston, want to go on record and support.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, may I mention one other item?
Um, yes, counselor, quickly.
This, this project had been, had been originally proposed in early 2019 and was opposed by the community because of the size of the extension, which was over 2,800 square feet. We reduced that to 297 square feet and, uh, met with Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay in January of 2020 and received their letter of non-opposition. They were pleased that we were able to reduce the size of the project. So I haven't seen the letters in opposition, but I, I, I believe that they might have been proposed earlier when this was up for a hearing in June of 2019 and was pulled from the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Is one person that wanted to speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, last, last caller. Go ahead, Mr. Ambassador.
Thank you. Susan Frindle?
Uh, yes, um.
Sue, we can hear you, please go.
Excellent, all right. This is Susan Frindle from the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. I live at 140 Marlboro Street. Uh, as Mr. Green said, uh, the proposal was initially a much larger project. Um, and it was violently opposed by a large number of people. Uh, and we appreciate the fact that it is limited in size. We have also asked him about the elevator override. But I think the, well, the Architectural Commission can take care of that issue. We are in support of the proposal.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Um, I'm going to, uh, make a motion to approve and include, uh, recommendation for BPDA design review for the elevator headhouse.
Uh, this, this is BBAC, so we don't need to redo it.
Okay, all right, fine.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Green, you're all second.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-6011, 50 Rogers Street. This is a constructed duplex townhouse with one car garage, one and a half baths for each unit, roof deck and shared each townhouse. Violation is Article 14, Section 14 dash one, lot size is insufficient. Article 14, Section 14 dash, dash three, lot width is insufficient. Article 14, Section four, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 15, Section one, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article 16, Section eight, restricted roof structure district. Article 17, Section one, usable open space is insufficient. Article 18, Section one, front yard is insufficient. Article 18, Section two, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 20, Section eight, insufficient rear yard of certain shallow lot. Article 16, Section one, building height is excessive. And Article 16, Section one, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Mohan, can you put your name and address record, please?
Madam Chair, I think Mr. Mohan is having technical issues as we were trying to help him earlier.
Um, okay, Doug Stefanoff is on. He's the architect. Doug, can you please put your name and address on the record?
Uh, certainly. This is Doug Stefanoff, 423 West Broadway, South Boston, architect for 50 Rogers Street. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Apologize for Bill Mohan. I don't know what happened, but obviously technical. Yes, we come before you with a proposed, uh, two, uh, townhouse development, uh, right outside Andrew Square. Uh, it's a, a, a small lot. This is an, an impil project. Um, they're fairly modest units with parking. Uh, we have.
Okay, so, so counselor, there are a couple of questions we need to get to immediately. So we understand the lot size, lot width and lot frontage issue. Can you please address all the rest of the, um, adjoining violations? What is required and what, why are you violating them?
Um, certainly, um, starting at the top, uh, lot width. Uh, it is a, a narrow lot of 41.5 feet. Uh, so the lot requirement being 50. Uh, floor area ratio for, this is a, a local services. It's a mixed zoning district, so it's an L point five. Uh, therefore zoning being point five. Or, um, uh, we have a 1.78, which for a building or a house is quite, uh, modest. Restricted roof str- uh, structure. We do have two roof decks on top and with the community, they were okay with the roof decks. In fact, they liked the penthouse access to separate them. We sloped the roof of the penthouse, uh, so it slopes back from the street. Uh, the actual height that you see called out is to the top of the rooftop access. The main roof being 31 feet six inches, uh, which is well below, uh, the, the maximum. Uh, usable open space, uh, it does have a small, uh, backyard. Therefore, we do require, uh, relief. Uh, we have built.
Uh, sorry, sorry for one minute, couns-
Definitely.
Uh, Mr. Stefanoff, can we get to the parking and let's see how the parking is supposed to be working?
Oh, certainly. Uh, if you go into the plan, we have two, um, parking spaces, one per unit. That's within, uh, the building structure. And we've done tests to show maneuverability. Uh, in any project, you'd have 1.5 or two parking spaces required, um, per, let me just look at this here. Actually, park, parking's not a, a violation. We meet the parking requirement.
No, we're, we're concerned with the way the building presents because it looks like it's presenting as two front doors and two garage doors. Uh, and it looks like it needs two, um, two, um, a very, two, two, um, curb cuts.
Well, um, that, that is correct. Uh, it does have two front doors because they're townhouses, um, with a garage underneath on the first floor. Um, the, the neighbors were, were okay with that, uh, at our presentation. We do have a small mechanical, there's another door there for mechanical purposes.
Okay.
From townhouses.
Okay, so can you please stay on the line, Mr. Ehrlich? How are the plans?
Well, it's a very, uh, boxy and, and, uh, uh, not very attractive design. It, as you said, faces the street and it's got two doors on either side, a 10-foot garage door, it looks kind of suburban. And then it's quite a big headhouse. And even though the, the roof has been sloped to minimize, uh, or at least to reduce the impact on the street, it just seems unnecessarily large. I, it's, I, you know, for, and, and it, I mean, occupies the entire lot. It's, uh, um, I don't know, I have, uh, you know, technically, it's a, it's inadequate drawings from a design perspective, uh, I'm less, uh, less impressed.
Okay, um, is, is, may I have, um, any information from, uh, the BPDA?
Yes, Madam Chair, Jeff Hampton from the BPDA. We recommended denial without prejudice on this because the density was too high. Um, and also we're not in favor, obviously, of the, uh, the headhouse. We prefer to see a hatch. Um, I'm not sure why if, uh, Mr. Stefanoff said that they're below the height. I don't know why they would have been cited for building height in stories. My only, uh, guess would be that the, uh, the headhouse occupies more than one-third of the roof area. Uh, but in any case, we'd probably, if this were to be approved by the board, we'd ask for a significant design review and elimination of the headhouse.
Thank you. Uh, may I have, is, any questions from the board?
I got a question. So I'm just, I'm looking at it on, on maps, right? This is the brown building that is boarded up, is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Stefanoff, is that correct?
It's right next to the garage.
Okay, yeah.
It's the second, second building in.
Okay, so there's no parking on that side of the street to begin with, right?
There's no parking on the street, that's correct. It's a small street.
Okay, there's only parking on one side of the street?
Yes.
And it's the opposite side.
We wouldn't be taking any parking away, if that's the question.
Any other, any other questions from the board?
And, can I speak for a moment?
No, no. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Um, overwhelming support from the community. As, um, Joe just saw on maps, it was a rundown building, so they were more than happy to see something, um, nice go there and people living there rather than have it be vacant. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flink's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors in the area as well as the Andrew Square Civic Association. Thank you.
Is anybody else here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan.
Excuse me, one minute. If you are on the phone, please plus press star three so that we can, you can register the fact that you need to speak. Uh, go ahead, who's on now?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Councilor at large, Michael Flaherty. Counselor like to go on record, uh, of support with, uh, BPDA design review.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Uh, I would like to speak in opposition. Can you hear me?
Yes, please, your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Paul Morice. I own the adjacent property of 43 Preble Street, 2468 Windella. And I would like to voice my opposition for said project due to the fact that it is too close to the property line. I'm okay with the project. Aside from that, I would just like to see it not so close to my boundaries.
Thank you. Anybody else on this project? Mr. Ambassador, any raised hands?
Madam Chair, the only two raised hands were the two callers that have, uh, spoken.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion for, uh, denial without prejudice. I, I, I recognize that there is community support for the improvement, but I think there are just too many things that are wrong with the design to, uh, to just go BPDA design review. And I would suggest that Mr. Stefanoff kind of rethink the proposal, I mean, with the BPDA and come up with something that, um, uh, is more appropriate.
May I have a second?
Second, Tyron.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who is that?
Joe, go.
I, too, I'm in support of the motion. So motion carries. Next case, please.
Call the next case, calling BOA 104-7746, 83 to 87 Highland Street. This is seeking to change occupancy from an existing mixed-use building from two residential dwellings and a store to three residential dwellings. The violation is Article 50, Section 29, additional lot areas insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. I've got 14 letters of support and opposition, so. What's that? I got 14 letters of support, no opposition, so I'm just gonna say when it comes up.
Mr. Washington, you're on muted.
Hi, I'm the architect for the project. This is Bon Worthington. Uh, address, business address 110A Inman Street, Cambridge, Massachusetts. And I, I believe we had, we were going to have, uh, the client should also be on the line, the owner. And I thought that we were going to have, uh, an attorney representing us today.
Who was your attorney?
Uh, Jeff, I believe it's Jeff Drago.
Uh, yeah, he should be on the line or somebody from his law office should be on the line.
He is on the line, Madam Chair. His hand is raised, but he is muted.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Jeff Drago. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, please, Mr. Drago, put your name and address on the record and tell us what you propose.
Yes, sorry about that. I was muted. I'm just raising my hand. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago in Tuscana with an address of 15 Broad Street, uh, representing my client Dylan Brennan, the owner of 83 dash 87 Highland Street. Uh, this is straightforward proposal to change the occupancy from an existing two-family dwelling with a store on the first floor, um, to change that first floor to a residential unit. This particular area is a zoning district of Ro House, so this use would be more conducive to the neighborhood. Um, just another point to reference, there is all, even though this was zoned as a store, half of it was already built out as an illegal apartment. My client has not rented that space. We left it vacant, but we felt we wanted to renovate and convert that to a residential unit. Um, the two violations, just to mention, um, one, when you change that unit to residential, you are required for an additional lot area of 2,000 square feet, uh, which we do not have. And usable open space is required of 200 per, per unit, square feet per unit. We have 400 total. The building will remain as it stands. There will be some renovation to the exterior, putting in, uh, windows where some of those doorways are. There's a bunch of different entrance ways that are unnecessary. I can also go over the floor plan.
Uh, please, please tell us what the size of the proposed unit is.
Sure, if you go to the next slide, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, thank you. This just shows you, uh, the proposed new first-floor unit. Now, uh, what's as proposed, it's 1,428 square feet. It is a three-bedroom, two-bath area on that space. Um, the other two units are pre-existing, uh, on the above floors. Um, we did have, uh, extensive community process that went along with this. I received a lot of support. As I had mentioned, there was residential housing all around this building, so we felt this was a more appropriate use.
That's a, uh, could be a pretty handsome building. Okay, um, is this in an architectural, um, or an N D O D?
It is not.
It is not, okay. Um, and this, this is the proposed unit is, and it has a, so it is three-bedroom plus an office?
Uh, there's an office space there, yeah, for addition.
And there's no closet in the offices there?
No.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jessica Thomas from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we'd like to go on record to support the project. Um, the Butters meeting was held on February twelfth, twenty-twenty, and they also met with the Holland Park Neighborhood Coalition. Uh, we did not hear any opposition from the Butters or neighbors. So I'll get on record to support.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have fourteen letters of support.
Thank you. Um, is anybody here to speak in opposition? Miss Ambassador, anybody on the, any hands raised? Thank you, put your name and address on the record, please.
Someone, hello? From Council President Kim Janey?
Uh, your name again, please, I'm sorry.
Sa- Samuel Ruttado from Council President Kim Janey?
Yes, go ahead.
And, uh, to speak on, on opposition, uh, mostly we wanted to ask for a deferral. Uh, we heard from the Neighborhood Association that they had a meeting with, with the team, uh, in this conversion from commercial to housing, but they didn't see the final proposal, so would like the opportunity for the neighborhood to see the final proposal from the Neighborhood Association. As it stands, we cannot support this project.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project? Miss Ambassador, any more raised hands?
Madam Chair, yeah? I'm sorry.
Um, co- um, but, counselor for the project, we are still in deliberation, so please, um, please hold on. Um, Miss Ambassador, any more raised hands?
Yes, caller, you're unmuted. Counselor Flaherty's office, do you have any comments?
Oh, no, it's, 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 it's...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I think that's it, uh, Madam Chair, I don't see any other raised hands.
Thank you, um, I'm sure, Counsel, that you will contact the, the Neighborhood Association to share the plans, which look pretty straightforward. Um, please, may I have a motion?
Uh, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Go over there, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
If there are, like, if there are any exterior changes, can we take a look at it, please? Because it isn't an N D O D.
It isn't an N D O D, okay? Please, may I, um, and, and we just need to know that it's for design review, okay? Design review. Counselor, are you there?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
With approval with BPDA's time review.
That's fine, and just, just so you know, we did share the final plan, nothing has changed with the group, but we will reach out to them again and submit the plans to them in a second.
Thank you, thank you. Um, mo- so, uh, just, just to finesse the record, please, Mr. Ehrlich, can you amend your motion to include design review?
Yes, well, uh, my motion is to approve with design review.
Is there a second?
Can that do?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling DOA one-zero-four-two-eight-three-two, eighty-eight Wambach Street. This is to erect a three-story, three-family dwelling on an existing four-thousand-twenty-five-square-foot vacant lot. The violation is Article fifty, section twenty-nine, additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the front yard is insufficient, and Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Attorney Daniel McDevitt, Granite Avenue in Milton. With me is Solomon Chowdhury, the petitioner, and his architect, uh, Alfonso Sierra.
So, tell us what's being proposed?
So, what we're proposing is to create a, uh, to build a three-family house on a lot that is three F four-thousand zone, and there was at one time a three-family house on this lot. So it certainly is the best use of the land to come back with a three, where there was a three at one time.
So, I'm looking at Google Maps. Can you please tell me what the, what the landscape is? Is it two, is it three, is it a combination?
So, there's a combination of twos and threes, uh, i- in this neighborhood. Uh, directly next to our lot is a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot vacant lot. Next to that is a three on thirty-five-hundred square feet. So it's typically twos and threes up, up, up and down the street from Harold Street to Humboldt Avenue.
And it looks like some of the houses are very well-loved on this street.
Yes, they are, there's no question about it. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a lovely neighborhood, uh, uh, Crawford Street, Harold Street, Holland Street, uh, uh, the, 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 uh, lots are well-maintained. This would be three condominium units, uh, uh, so there would be homeownership opportunity. Um, the, as you would know, that this building would have sprinklers and the first floor unit would be accessible with a lift. Um, and we've got...
As I look at the drawings and as I look at the, um, you know, the streetscape, tell me how this would be complementary, how this would complement, this design would complement the street?
Well, I, I think if you look up the street to the house that's next to, uh, the other vacant lot, um, I believe it doesn't even have its porches anymore, so I...
I, I, well, that, that is the exception to the street. The rest, the street looks, um, looks as if the design is pitched roof, it's, um, you know, it's, it's a different kind of design.
Uh, there are pitched roofs, there are roofs, there are turrets, uh, there are any number of different designs, uh, on this street. Of course, at the end of, uh, of Wambach Street near Humboldt, you do have the, uh, the Trotter School and the Trotter School Playground, so what were houses, uh, down at that end aren't there anymore. Uh, some of these houses are, are three families. Uh, we, we could have designed a pitched roof, but it would have, because of the elevations, it would have required a height violation, which this does not have. Uh, and it, so it's tr- it's consistent with the traditional three-decker, uh, in that it has bay windows on the front on all three floors, and it has, uh, the front porches that, uh, replicate what you would see going up and down any particular street, uh, in, um, in Roxbury, Dorchester, uh, most parts...
Um, so tell me how parking is being accommodated, because I noticed that is not a violation.
Okay, so there's a driveway on the side of the building, and the, and there are three spots in the rear, um...
Steph, can you please pull that up?
I believe it shows on the site plan. It's right there on the left, on that particular sheet.
Oh, so it's rear yard parking, one per unit?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and how long has this property owner owned this lot?
Oh, well, this process has been going on well, well over a year, and I think that he's owned it, uh, under two years, but close to two years.
And how's the current maintenance? Because I'm looking at the lot, and I don't know when these photos were taken. It's, um, copyrighted two thousand and two, but...
The lot's clear.
Okay. Okay, can you, uh, please stay on the line, um, on the, on this, um... Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Well, I, I, uh, totally agree with, it's completely out of context with the, uh, abutting, uh, neighborhoods. It, it just looks odd in that the columns on the porches look odd, the whole, kind of using a triple-decker format in that neighborhood is, is out of character, so... Uh, you know, the plans are, again, technically fine, um, but I would think if we're gonna approve it, it should have very, very strong BPDA design review.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Any comment from BPDA?
Uh, Madam Chair, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Again, uh, I couldn't agree more with, uh, the Chair and Mr. Ehrlich about the, uh, neighborhood context. Usually when we're looking at triple-deckers, the entire street is triple-deckers. This is not the case on Wambach. Um, and I think significant, uh, design review would be necessary. I don't know, um, to the Counselor's, uh, point also, if we were to change the roofline, what does that do in terms of a zoning violation that they don't have now?
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, 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 counselor to the applicant, um, question, how large are, are, what is the size of each of the units?
Uh, each of the units would be approximately twelve-hundred square feet.
And they, they are, how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms, two bath.
Two bedrooms, two bath, okay. Please stay on while I continue. Um, I would like to take the following process. I would like to hear from, um, elected officials, either in support or in opposition. I understand that there are two attendees at the B R A Boardroom. Attendees, thank you for making it down to City Hall. I would then like to have them get on the record on, uh, Wambach Street. So please, representatives of, um, elected officials, either in support or in opposition, please put your name and address on the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we had in a Butters meeting, um, uh, August twentieth, twenty-nineteen. Um, they also met with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association and has been in touch with them. Um, we received, as of this morning, thirty-two letters of support from the Butters for the project, and we'd like to go on record to support.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Samuel Ruttado from Council President Kim Janey. We are asking for a deferral. Uh, we cannot support the project as it stands. Uh, prayer for, uh, Council President Janey is to preserve the character of this neighborhood as you share the same concerns. Uh, we have received a request from the Neighborhood Association, Garrison Trotter, to also defer, their concerns have not been addressed yet, uh, so that's our position, uh, we cannot support the project as is now. Thank you.
Is, is, so, I'd like, any, any other elected officials who need to go on the record on Wambach Street?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have thirty-one letters of support.
Thank you. Um...
I have Michael Flaherty's hand raised.
Okay, please, uh, be a name and address for the record.
Uh, no, not for this project.
Um, can you un, uh, unring your hand, please?
Okay, um, so let me go to the B R A Boardroom, and whoever is there, uh, from the community on Wambach Street, uh, please put your name on, on, and address on the record, and, um, tell us verbally what your, uh, what your support or opposition is based on.
Hi, my name is Grant Calendar, nineteen Brooklyn Street. Uh, I'm the owner of number ninety, the lot at number ninety Wambach Street, and I'm here to oppose the project.
Now, if I'm looking at the street, uh, Mr. Calendar, which house is yours?
Uh, the lot, uh, empty lot directly, uh, next to the, um, the subject lot.
Okay.
And directly across the street, uh, number eighty-five.
Okay, thank you. So you own, um, ninety, and do you live at eighty-five?
Uh, no, no, I, I live at, uh, at, at Brook, at nineteen Brooklyn Street. I used to live at eighty-five, I lived there for about twenty years.
Okay. Okay, um, and you're in the BPDA Boardroom?
Yes, I am, ma'am.
Thank you, anybody else in, I know there's somebody else in the BPDA Boardroom. Please put your name and address on the record.
This is Connie Ford from the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association.
And tell us if you are in support or in opposition?
Opposition.
Uh, what's, uh, what is the, what is it based on?
Insufficient information to move forward with the project and, um, the refusal of the proponent to meet with the, uh, community of Butters and the community association and provide information that you requested, and not having information on the plot plans that, um, we specifically requested at one of the meetings that they attended. Um, basically, this is a, um, on a hill, there are no indications of any type of retaining wall to prevent soil erosion. Uh, we don't know what type of foundation they're using. There's a number of questions that they have not been...
So did this, um, um, Connie, did this go to the full, uh, association meeting at some point?
There was a representative from the proponent who showed up, but they did not have any information that was requested, um, standard to the organization, and when asked questions, they basically blew off all of the inquiries that were made.
Okay, so, um, so a- as you've heard on, on the, on this, uh, on this call, on this, um, video conference here, that it is, um, a two, a three, those three family, you've heard the sounds, um, what would you respond to that?
Uh, we also, I'm sorry, we also have letters, uh, we also have signatures of the directed Butters who are on the street, uh, who are impacting directly on this project, and, uh, we can simply give the, like, the, 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 the version, um, of... And I, I didn't quite hear the question you asked before I just spoke next.
Um, so are you, um, are you opposed the concept of the three family? Are you opposed to the fact that the applicant did not come to the meeting? Uh, what, what? I'm trying to get clarity, I'm trying to separate the project from the applicant, if, if, if that's an, an okay question to ask.
Oh, okay, definitely, so the project is out of context for the entire community. It's, even if you propose developing it, there's not enough details to, um, even, uh, make any type of determination. You said it's, it's the var- the variances that they're asking for. When they bought the property, they knew what the Article fifty was, and the new Article was, but there is no substantial hardship being demonstrated, so we're trying to be as open, um, flexible, transparent as possible, but, but we are, we are not able to get information that justifies this project to move forward.
Okay, um, given that information, may I have any comments from the, um, the representative to the applicant?
Uh, Madam Chair, Attorney McDevitt speaking. Uh, with me is the architect, uh, Alfonso Sierra. He attended that meeting, he had the drawings, and he did the details. Um, my understanding about Mr. Calendar's opposition is that he has a vacant lot next door, he was concerned about snow removal. Because of the slope of the lot, a retaining wall has to be built from the lot line, and because, I think that the great benefit of this is that it is condominium, and snow removal will be in the budget. Last year, you could have removed all the snow in twenty minutes for the whole year. Uh, we don't know what will happen next year, but having it in the budget, if there's a lot of snow, it'll be treated like any other condo project in the city where they have a nominal amount of snow, they take it away in a bar cat. Uh, but, but his concern would still be pushed onto his vacant of land, But his concern would snow be pushed onto his vacant land. And I think that the retaining wall, it would be impossible to push snow onto his land. My client's cousin owns the house on the other side of the vacant lot. And he is in faith. So I would just say that when the three or four thousand. Lot, it is a real. The three family back on that lot.
Okay, can you please wait a minute, Mr. McDevitt? Ms. Ambassador, can you please unmute Louis Elisa? Mr. Elisa, if you're on the phone, please press star three. Put your name and address on the record. And please tell us your reason for either support or opposition of this project.
I'm on a computer, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Put your name and address on the record.
My name is Louis Elisa. I live at 68 Seaver Street, but I'm president of the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. Been 43 years representing this neighborhood. And we've done a number of projects, and we've tried to be fair with all projects, understanding that change is inevitable. But we don't want change just for the sake of making or enriching someone else. When we ask proponents for projects to come into the Garrison Trotter, the standard is the same for every person we invite or every person we accept coming into Zenner Project. We ask that they bring information that's clear to us so that we can share with the members. We also have a housing review team that takes the time, other than the monthly meetings, to go over the plans and specifications that the proponents of projects wish to provide us with. This proponent has failed to meet those standards. And so in the sense we're not intending to reject the project, we ask that be deferred because he has not fulfilled the requirements that we asked for him to make the information available. There was concerns raised by the members of the Housing Committee. In addition, you raised some of the issues that we had, that each of us have, having worked with a number of projects that refers to designing, character, and nature of the project itself. People putting up structures for pedestrian purposes, just to put up a structure and make some money. I understand their concern, but I ask them to take in consideration the nature and character of a community that should be on historic register. If it's not, it has history, and it has basically a culture that this design doesn't speak to. I think they just want to move it, you know, this industrial, you know, type idea that you can just put in a flat three-story building is not in character and sink where it goes on. I think a little bit more time and effort, and maybe some support from the BP, Western Planning Development Agency may get the proponent to where he needs to be. It also may cost them a little bit of space and time and may not be able to do three stories. I'm not sure. But I really would request that you defer and give him an opportunity to come back with something that meets the character and the concerns of the community and allows us to work with him to get where he would like to be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lisa. Can you hold on? Can we have everybody muted, but, excuse me, but for the board members? Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Okay. Sarah, second.
Can I comment on the motion?
Yes, please, go ahead, Mr. Ehrlich.
Here's my concern about deferral, which is that if, in fact, they go back and they meet the neighborhood, deal with design and issues of context, that that might end up triggering new zoning violations because he might go to a two, pitch roof. So I'm wondering, Mr. Ujero, whether it makes more sense to do a denial without prejudice, is literally go back to the drawing boards, deal with the community stuff, and then come back with a reconfigured project with whatever violations may be in place.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Let me add my two cents. The reason I think that denial without prejudice might work is that I think that given the number of violations, that in fact, that working it and working with the neighborhood might actually result in a project that's, that may decrease the violations and actually be more visually supportive of the neighborhood. So I'm willing to give them a chance to kind of really get to the drawing boards through a deferral process and work this through.
Okay, I rescind the motion for deferral and would make a motion for denial without prejudice.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it's, so it's a denial without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. Ujero.
Next case, please.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 956-971-118, Harrishoff Street. This is a change occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling by adding a new apartment into the basement. Renovate existing basement. Remove and replace staircase on the first floor foyer to basement. In the same location, install a half-bath in the basement. Construct a new dormer addition. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. Use of regulations, multi-family dwelling is forbidding. Article 50, Section 29, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the fluid air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking and loading requirements. Name and address for the record, please.
While the applicant is getting ready, I would like the applicant or representative of the applicant to start off very briefly describing. We understand that this is an extension to the basement, but can be moved directly to the violations. Is Mr. Callon on?
Madam Chair, I don't see him on.
Are there any raised hands?
Yes, the only raised hand is from President Janey's office.
Is anybody from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services on?
I am here. They did reach out earlier. They were having some issues logging in, but it seemed like they were on about a half an hour ago. So I'm not sure what happened, but they were having issues this morning getting in. They were saying that there was an issue with the password.
Jessica, do you know who is representing them on this?
It should have been Prince Kalon. He was our developer, and Earlene Brown, I believe, is the owner. They both had reached out.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, let me go through some of the callers and see if indeed Prince Kalon is on, if he called in this phone.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on muted. Your name, please? Caller, you're on muted?
Hello?
Hi, your name, please?
Oh, I'm not in this case. I'm waiting for the 14th Street Alap.
She just sent a text saying that she, they're here on the call. I'm not sure.
Hello? Yes?
Hello?
Hi, Prince Kalon.
Yeah, this is Prince Kalon. I'm the art designer on the project, and I'm here with the owner. We are speaking next. Hello?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, my name is Prince Kalon. I live on this Sander Street in Maripan. I'm the art designer on this project. I'm here with the owner. We are seeking variance from the ZB, potential occupancy from three-family dwelling to four, including the AD. But we want the basement to be independent unit. So the last time we had a meeting, it was in March. The issue was circulation through the basement to the rear yard and then home to the front entrance. So I did a diagrammatic drawing, which I believe you have now, with arrows across the basement to show the exit and the entrance to the building. So we're only seeking variance for the building, for the basement to be independent unit. Everything is in here, they're accessed from the front without entering any of the other floors to the rear yard of the building.
Okay, I'm looking at a picture of the building on Google Maps. Can you please tell me, what the number of units are currently? How many bedrooms per unit? What, and what the proposed expansion is? And how many bedrooms will be on that third floor and in the basement?
I start with the third floor. Third floor has two rooms. Two rooms, living room. And the second floor has three bedrooms. And the first floor has three bedrooms also. And we are seeking to have one bedroom in the basement only.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement? It's eight feet, okay? And staff, can you move to the drawings and show us the basement, please? Yes, please keep going, staff, on the proposed construction, proposed basement plan?
Okay. Yeah, we only have to have one bedroom there. There's one bedroom, there's this one bedroom there. That's the only one we have.
Okay. Yes, stop right there, thank you. So you already have an existing bedroom in the basement?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Mr. Ehrlich, tell us about this, about this plan. How are the plans on this?
Well, the access and egress and the circulation works okay under this design. The, I guess the applicant just said it's eight feet. There's a number of windows. Can you tell us what the floor to the bottom of the window is in terms of height?
Forty-four inches.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Forty-four inches.
Forty-four inches, okay. All right, the plans are adequate.
Okay. Is any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Ms. Ambassador, any raised hands?
Yes, Jessica?
Yep, okay, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We had an abutters meeting back in September 12th, 2019. From the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association was there as well. We found a site visit and was able to look at the plants and also the space. There was concern about the egresses, but it looks like it was addressed. The owner is a long-term resident of the neighborhood and is looking to expand to help with her family who's also living with her and like to go on record to support the project.
Thank you.
I have Counselor, Madam President, Janey's office.
We have no comment on this.
Okay.
See, please put your name and address on the record.
He said he has no comment.
Yes. Okay, just for the record, to let us, to let everybody know that that was representative from Counselor Janey's office. Is anybody else here to speak either in support or in opposition? Just as in the previous case, we will go to the BPDA Boardroom because there are two members of the community there to speak on this project.
So hi, I'm Connie Forbes calling Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association.
Hold on for a minute. There is a massive echo. Is there a way of ameliorating that?
I'm Connie Forbes from Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. We had a few questions, but one of the questions that I was asking ISB on was, because it's going to be four units where people reside, is there a requirement for a sprinkler system for this project? And we also asked the abutter proponent if they have access to their parking, and they were not able to, clarity on that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the boardroom to speak on this project? No?
No one else in the boardroom?
Thank you. Is any other raised hands on Wombach? If you're on the phone, please dial star three or two. I have your voice heard. Mr. Elisa, are you here also to speak on Harrisoff?
Yes, I am.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Louis Elisa, 68 Seaver Street, Roxbury Garrison, President Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. I'm here to raise questions that were not asked, answered. When they did come, I believe they came twice to the meeting, and we asked for elevations, we asked for longitudinals to get some clear understanding about the height in the basement, the specifics of it. We did not get to see those boards, that information. We also had a question, which I didn't see in the original presentation. He was creating dormers, and I'm not sure what the dormer impact was going to be on the sightlines and how they fit into the rest of the community. On one drawing, I see two dormers, one on each side of the building. And on the drawings that were presented at council here today, I saw one dormer. So I'm not clear. My recommendation is that they, you know, that they come back with something that's much clearer than what we saw. And as the Secretary Forbes said, we had questions about parking and how it's going to be handled. We were told the architect said he didn't handle the plot plan, so he didn't have that information, and no one has yet presented that information. So the association did meet on this. We did talk about it, discuss it, and the Housing Committee discussed it. And we were left inconclusive because of the lack of information. So if your architect is good with the announcements that all the heights and spaces are working, I can accept his, but I do have some challenges, given that the new designs that we've seen have dormers, and we don't know how they fit. I've seen more elevations, no front or side view elevations as to how they fit in with the other buildings in the area.
It looks from the side view that this has been, this building has been slightly remodeled in some way. So I think that it would benefit from just clarity about how everything would work as I look at it from street view. So may I have a motion for a deferral on this?
Madam Chair, we still have letters of support and opposition that haven't been put on the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please read those and put them to the record.
We have 20 letters of support and two letters of opposition.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for deferral. The drawings pretty clearly show one dormer, one new dormer, but there are enough questions. And the issue of sprinkling is something that needs to be addressed. So I think it would be helpful if the applicant met with the Neighborhood Association one more time and came back to the board with a clear proposal.
And to add to that, we would like to see what, a rendering of what those dormers would look like on the building, given its current configuration. May I have a second, please? Hold on, no, I just need to have a second, please.
Joe Vajero, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So may we have a date, please?
Madam Chair, we have the date of October 20th at 11:30.
Thank you. Applicants will see you October 28th at 11:30. Thank you.
The 20th, two zero.
I'm sorry, 20th, October 20th at 11:30.
Calling BOA 101-6717, 682 Blue Hill Avenue. This is a renovation of an existing five-family dwelling. This is new mechanicals, new kitchen, construct rear decks, egress stairs. Violation, Article 60, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient, and Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Tony Derek Small. This is Justice 51 Dobson Road, Branch in Mass. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief for the gut renovation of an existing five-family dwelling at 682 Blue Hill Avenue. The zoning sub-district is 3F5,000. The lot size is a possibility. The zoning sub-district is three F five thousand, and the lot size is approximately six thousand square feet. Again, this is a-
Just before we go on, Mr. Mr. Small, uh, was this a legal pre-existing use?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, so- Okay, go ahead.
And it's just a gut re- renovation, bring it up to code, um, you know, all the fire codes, all new mechanicals, new everything. We have, uh, two, two violations, backyard violation, the requirement is ten feet, we're at six. And the second violation is the se- exist, extension of a non-conforming use, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, so the-
It's a legal five, it's a legal five, and we just renovated.
So are there any dormers being added? Is there any living space in the basement being proposed?
Nope, not a lot.
Give us, give us the, um, sizes of each proposed unit at the-
Yep, all of the units are two, two, two bedrooms, two three bedrooms, one four bedroom, and the range, the size range from nine hundred and forty-four square feet to approximately two thousand square feet.
Sorry, again, two bedrooms, three bedroom?
And one four bedroom.
Okay, uh, and how is parking being accommodated?
Parking is in the rear. Um, we have four spaces in the rear, and that's permitted under a use and occupancy permit given by Inspection Services Department.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, they're, they're pretty straightforward, they're, they're fine.
Okay, any, anybody, uh, with raised hands to speak in support of this proposal? And again, if you are on the line, please press star three to raise your hand.
I'm gonna have, um, Counselor Asabi George's office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Stully from Counselor Asabi George's office. Uh, we're gonna go on the record and ask for a deferral. Uh, we've heard that they have not met with the zoning committee at the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council. And the community would like a chance to discuss the project with the developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, we had a Butters meeting sponsored by the-
Counselor, Counselor, can you please wait? Is anybody on the line from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Facee Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we would like to go on record in support and just outline, uh, the community process that this project has had a Butters meeting back on, uh, February sixth of this year. And they also met with the Erie Ellington, uh, Neighborhood Association, who didn't, you know, express any outstanding concerns at this time. So we would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak either in support or in opposition? Uh, please raise your hand, if you are on the phone, please press star three.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd like to go on record in support, hearing from, uh, support of Director Butters.
Thank you.
Fatima, you're on mute.
Uh, thank you.
Please put your name and address on the record.
Uh, my name is Fatima Ali Salam, thirty-four Burma Street, Mattapan. Um, I'm Chair of the, as Chair of the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council. I had, um, just a few questions. Uh, there was a question why it was coming up under Article sixty if it was already an existing use, um, for a five-family dwelling going as far back as nineteen ninety. Uh, the other question is, if this is the house that looks like a very large Victorian house that's been ref- uh, directly across from Franklin Park Zoo, and now it is actually gray and white, I believe? Uh, it looks to be completely renovated on the outside, is that the same house?
Okay, um, any, any other questions, or is that it?
Uh, it looks like a single-family house, that's, that's what we were, didn't realize it was a multifamily, that's what we wanted to-
Okay, thank you. You, can you mute everybody? Is anybody else to speak on this project? Any other raised hands?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, please respond, Counselor?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. This is, as I said, it's an existing five-family, it's always been a five-family. We did have community meetings with Erie Ellington and-
I, 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 uh, Counselor?
Yes?
I'm looking at this on Google Maps, it looks like it's being renovated already, which is good. Um, but as I had asked before, it's so, it was a legal, I just wanna confirm that it was a legal non-conforming use, um, at six eighty-two Blue Hill Ave.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Uh, I will second and develop.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
And Counselor, please be in touch with, uh, the Mattapan group, just so that they're clear on what's happening.
That is fine, Madam Chair, we don't have a problem with that, but we look at the process that was given to us.
I, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Okay, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero three six four zero six, two fifty-one Bowden Street. This is a change of arcs from adult education computer training lab to a restaurant with takeout. The violation, Article sixty-five, section fifteen, restaurant with takeout is conditional. Name and address, full of record, please.
My name is Jean-Louis. Sixty-one Bowden Street.
So, uh, tell us the name of the restaurant you are proposing to have, and if you understand what the takeout provisions are?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's Plato Chawarma.
I'm sorry, what is it again?
Plato Chawarma.
Okay, okay. Um, and, uh, so you're, is, you're having some sit-down, and you're having takeout, okay?
Yes.
Okay. How, uh, please stay on the line. Um, do you have any experience with takeout?
Uh, I just took some, uh, cooking class. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, the minimums, they're fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak for this project?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Chantal Lima-Barboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and a Butters meeting was hosted on March thirteenth of twenty twenty. Applicant received support from Director Butters, Greater Bowden Geneva Neighborhood Association, and Bowden Geneva Main Street. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record supporting this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chief, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Anybody else with raised hands to speak on this?
For one day.
Thank you. Any, uh, anybody else to speak on any more raised hands?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have five letters of support and two letters of opposition.
Thank you. Madam Ambassador, um, everybody counted for?
Uh, yes, I just wanna ask, uh, Fatima, are you all set?
Uh, yes, thank you, Aisha.
Just on raise your hand, please.
Okay, and who is Joe with a raised hand?
Joe, hold on, please. Joe, you're on mute?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckman, City Council, Frank Baker's office, like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, before we get a, a motion, uh, the two letters of opposition brought up, uh, some existing issues with trash, garbage, rodent infest- infestation. So I just wanna make sure that's on the record that those two, uh, letters of, of opposition were from a Butters in regards to the trash.
So I just wanna go and find out from the applicant, is this an existing restaurant? Or are you moving into this space?
No, no, hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Yes, uh, yes, uh, it's not a newer, it's not a, uh, existing restaurant, but it's a new restaurant, but, uh, this, uh, question that, uh, was raising, it was raised last time when, when I was on the board of, uh, I think we already, uh, we already, uh, the, uh, already, already, uh, get, uh, uh, a way that we can do for the trash, then I have, uh, I have, uh, another restaurant that's, I can, I allow me to, so I got the letter and, uh, on, on a record. And then also, the, the second one, it was for, uh, kind of some rent and stuff that I have to figure out with my, uh, my-
Just please stay on the line. Uh, I, I would suggest that this applicant might need, um, some assistance from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, just to clarify that in fact, and that eventually neighborhood concerns will be addressed and that he completely understands the takeout process.
Hello?
Give-
This is Chantal from Neighborhood Services. So the, um, there's a restaurant right in Bowden Street, right across from him, that has agreed to help him with trash management. These questions were answered during the, uh, Neighborhood Association meeting. I'm not sure when those letters were sent to ZBA, but, uh, there's been an understanding that he has the support, uh, to manage the trash. Cause as of right now, it's not a restaurant.
Yes.
So that should already been addressed, and that's why the Neighborhood Association went ahead and emailed us the support.
Okay, um, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I acknowledge, right?
I think we need the usual takeout language.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, the Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling nine nine three three eight six, eleven Greenmount Street. Just direct a new four-unit building and parking. The violation is Article sixty-five, section eight, a multifamily dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article sixty-five, section nine, the lot area with additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the height is excessive, number of stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, the height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-five, section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard setback is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address, full of record, please.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent the, uh, project developer, Edward Ahern. Uh, Madam Chair, members, this is an application to demolish an existing, uh, two-family dwelling on a thirty-one hundred sixty-one square foot lot at nine dash eleven, uh, Greenmount Street, uh, in Dorchester, and to replace it with a new four-unit building. Uh, the site is, uh, located on Greenmount, mid-block between Pleasant Street and Dorchester Avenue. Uh, it is also directly across Greenmount Street from, uh, the, uh, the DOT block, uh, project. The, um, units would be, um, above a, uh, a, a five-car parking garage that is partially open, uh, in the rear. Um, unit, uh, one would be an eight hundred fifty square foot, uh, two-bedroom. Unit two would be a seven hundred forty square foot two-bedroom. Unit three, a sixteen hundred twenty square foot bi-level two-bedroom plus. And unit four, an eighteen hundred ninety square foot, uh, bi-level two-bedroom plus. The zoning violations are for insufficient usable open spa- I'm sorry, insufficient lot area for additional dwelling units. Uh, this is a three FD three thousand, uh, district under Article sixty-five. For four units, four thousand five hundred square feet would be required. The lot is, as I said, three thousand one hundred sixty-one square feet. The maximum FAR here is one point three, the proposed FAR is two point one. The maximum height is three stories and forty feet. This building is a four-story building, uh, forty-one feet high. Three hundred square feet of open space per dwelling unit is required. With the small front balconies, uh, rear balconies, and the two private roof decks, uh, there would be an average of two hundred forty-five square feet per u- per unit. This matter was deferred, uh, before the hiatus, uh, owing to concerns, uh, of the community that were addressed in a new plan seat that the board did not get in time for that hearing. As a result of that community process, this was reduced from a five-unit building to the, to its present, uh, f- five-story building to its present, to four-story building. The side yards were increased to setbacks from, uh, three feet, uh, they're, they're now five-foot side setbacks. Uh, there is a rear foot setback of ten feet, uh, ten point four feet. It is cited as a violation, but, uh, it is in fact compliant with respect to rear setback and side setbacks. There are two roof decks, as I said, they are accessed by, um, by headhouses. Uh, headhouses are, uh, preferably means of accessing the roof, they're safer means of accessing the roof. Uh, this began as a five-story building. It is located across from DOT block, as I said, which is a five-story project. Uh, so this building is, is, yes?
Please stay on this, um, on this, on this video conference call here. Um, uh, Mr. Olick, this is a three-FD project, um, this is a three-FD, which is, uh, pretty much a triple death and zoning district, that's what the plans.
Um, the plans are okay, uh. Uh, Mr. Marancy, I'm a little confused, you, you're not showing a plot plan. You said, the ele- rear elevation appears to show that the parking spaces underneath are accessible to the rear, but I don't see a plot plan that shows any egress or ingress.
Um, I'm going through my, so if the, um, there is a garage entrance on the right side of the building?
Yes, um, I, um, right?
Yes, exactly, and, and the drive runs up the right in, in, uh, in the rear, if you go to the elevation, um, if you were to go to eight-
Yes, eighty thirty-one, there's a rear elevation that shows it's open, but I, but there's no plot plan. Do they get, can they get out up to the street that way?
No, uh, it's, it's, it's through the driveway, uh, and out, uh, onto Greenmount Street.
Okay, so what, so I'm just curious, why is it open in the rear, then?
Uh, I don't know if my client is, is, uh, is on the, uh, on the call. Um, it, uh, in closing the garage, I, I guess could be, uh, accomplished. Uh, it would, uh, it would, uh, have, uh, implications, I guess, for fire suppression.
Okay, so that's one issue, and then I don't, I have trouble seeing the need for two headhouses on a, on relative to small roof decks.
Yeah, the, uh, knowing that that would be an issue, as I said, it did, uh, sort of begin life as a five-story building. It is directly across from DOT block, uh, so in terms of context, uh, it's gonna be, uh, you know, a, a five-story project across the street. Um, you know, this issue always comes up, I mean, the fact of the matter is that, that it, it's just a lot safer and, and better to provide access where context allows, where neighborhood context allows, by penthouse, uh, rather than roof hatch. And that's why it is a requirement to the building code. Uh, these could be minimized as much as possible, they're, you know, centrally located on the building, and, and that could probably even be, um, um, you know, uh, more attention given to that fact. They are sloped penthouses, they slope with the, uh, with the staircase. But, you know, frankly, for anyone, you know, in a unit, it is, uh, it is quite honestly preferable to be able to, uh, you know, particularly for older individuals, it is preferable to be able to, uh, access the, uh, the roof, the roof hatch and the amenities, uh, by, by means of penthouse. As I said, it's not always appropriate in terms of neighborhood context, but given the large multifamily project going up across the street, this I don't think, uh, would, would stick out, as, as it might in some other areas.
So there's-
We can agree to disagree on that, Mr. Marancy.
Yes.
I, I think that fundamentally, but again, I, I point to the fact that even, uh, even technically, it's, it's why it is a-
Mr. Marancy, can you please hold on? Um, Steph, can you please show us the, the street, the rendering from the street, please, on this project? Uh, in the meantime, are there any questions? In the meantime, are there any questions from the board? Other questions, other board members? Mr. Marancy, do you have any clarity on where that drawing might be that shows the street view?
Yeah, it's A30.
Yes. And, and also, I just wanted to get back to the garage. The open air in the, in the back, Mr. Ehrlich, that also provides additional maneuverability within the garage. If, if the walls came down sheer, it just wouldn't be as maneuverable.
But what's behind it? Is it just backyard? What, I mean, there's no plot plan, so I can't tell what's going on behind.
Yeah, there's about a 10, there's about 10 feet, 4 inches to the rear lot line.
And will that be grass? What will it be?
I assume it would be grass. You know, maybe the, you know, paved around the perimeter of the building in the rear to allow, you know, walk around and then grass behind that to the lot line.
Is, is there a rendering that shows what the street view would be for this proposed project?
There's no rendering included in the submission, no. If somebody, you know, were able to share a, you know, a Google Street View, but it's, it's not in the, it's not in the submitted package.
Okay, thank you. So last week, as a board, we were pretty determined about that 3D designation, that the buildings look like triple deckers. Maybe, so then I just want to ask the BPDA, can you go on record, please, on a recommendation from the BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. To your point, I was going to mention Hackler Street from last week. With this being a triple-decker district, we would be adamant that it remain a triple-decker if they were to tear down the existing structure. As you head down towards Greemount to Dorchester Avenue, there are triple deckers on the left-hand side. I believe even the abutting properties to the left, if you were looking at 11 Greemount, are triple deckers, maybe with a more modern look to it, but they are triple deckers. So if we had recommended denial because of the height, we reviewed this at a five-story project, and it didn't have any setback requirements at the time. But again, like I said last week, with this neighborhood being the only one with triple-decker zoning, we'd like to stick to that.
Thank you. Is any, is anybody here to speak in support of this project?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandell, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to honor and support this proposal. We ran a full community process for this in an abutters meeting held on site September 23rd of last year. I know they've also met subsequently with the area of abutters informally and have had numerous conversations with the Columbia Savin Health Civic Association. We would just ask for continued, continued BPDA design review, but would like to go in support of this.
Thank you. Any other raised hands in support of this project? I see Councilor Baker's office. Did you please put your full name on the record? I know Joey didn't hear you.
Madam Chair, John McGarver, City Councilor Baker's office, like to go on record, support.
Thank you. Any other raised hands on this project? Either, or in opposition? No other raised hands, Madam Chair. Okay. Excuse me. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Given the strong community support, I'm going to make a motion to approve, but with two providers, very strong BPDA designer view and the elimination of the headhouse.
I'll second that motion.
So designer view, and this is, it's no headhouse, okay?
Yes.
And a classic triple-decker design. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First, motion carries. Jeff, you got that?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 993-496-23 Arcadia Street. This is a change of auction from two residential units to eight residential units, construct a rare addition to extend living space. Also an addition of eight parking spaces. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of off-street parking area. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking and loading. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking, loading, maneuverability, and a multifamily is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, use of regulations, multifamily is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address, for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Barry with the Law Office located at 400 Granite Avenue, Milton, Massachusetts. Working with me on this project is RCA LLC, as the architects. With me today is James Christopher, the managing partner of RCA LLC. We are working on behalf of the owner, who is with us today as well, and Ms. Tina Tran, who has lived at 23 Arcadia Street for 25 years or longer with her family. The proposal that we're putting forward before the board today is to change the current two-family use of the lot to a eight-unit building. The lot is a very large lot in this particular neighborhood in the Fields Corner section of Dorchester, Massachusetts. The lot size is approximately 10,092 square feet of the eight units that are being proposed. They are, they are all bi-level. Unit one and unit two are bi-levels on the first floor in the basement. Units three through eight are bi-level on the second and third floor. The eight units comprised are five two-bedroom, two-bath, ranging from 1,084 square feet to 1,335 square feet. There's one two-bedroom and one bath, that's 1,427 square feet. And there are two three-bedroom, two baths that are 1,143 square feet to 1,330 square feet. We did participate in an extensive community process. We had an abutters meeting September 5th. And then we met with the Fields Corner Civic Association three separate times, first on November 12th. Due to the lack of participants of that meeting, it was a date where voting was occurring at their, where the meeting is located. We were asked to come back in December. We did come back in December. There was a vote. The vote unfortunately came back to the letter of opposition. We deferred our hearing date in January. We went back to Fields Corner again. At that point, we cut out around 1,000 square feet of, square footage of the existing proposal. We decreased the bedroom count from 20 to 18 bedrooms, and we decreased the bathroom count from 16 to eight total bathrooms. In addressing the violations that are listed, the first three that are listed in the refusal letter are related to the 10 parking spots that we are trying to fit on the location due to concerns related to, the concern for parking in this particular neighborhood. It's a very saturated neighborhood. It's comprised largely of triple deckers that almost comprise the entire lots of most of the surrounding lots that are much smaller, between 4,000 and 5,000 square feet in this area of Fields Corner. We were able to fit 10 parking spots by accessing the parking to the left of the structure. I'm going to let Mr. Christopher address the, the parking plans that have been presented before the board. The next violation is the fact that this is a 2F 5,000 neighborhood. Again, there's a large number of three families. There's a six-family in this particular neighborhood as well. We are requesting that the variance to build a eight-unit building here. The FAR, as proposed, is 1.17 in a district where the allowed FAR is 0.5. There is a violation for the building height and stories for three stories. That said, however, the height of the proposal is 35 feet. The existing structure, the existing two-family is 35 feet as well. The side yard, again, that is in large part, the side yard violation is created by trying to allow for the underpass on the left side of the structure for potential people living at this site to be able to pull off of Arcadia Street and into the parking lot without causing any traffic by parking on the street. And lastly, the rear yard violation is because, as proposed, it's 19 feet, 9 inches, where 30 feet is required in this district.
Okay, can you please pause for a minute? Do we need translator assistance on this project? And if so, please put your name and address on the record so we know who, who the translator is and who you're translating for, if it's the applicant or abutters.
There is a translator that's needed for abutters that I believe are calling in to speak in support of the project.
Okay.
Kua, you have been unmuted. Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Kua Fiam. I'll be interpreting for the abutters on her testimony.
So I, have you been able to adequately translate for them on the presentation that has occurred already? Or are they, or do they, or I'm assuming if they're speaking in support, they already understand what the proposal is?
I'm assuming they are aware of the proposal, and I'm just here to translating or interpret their testimony to, for the board.
Okay, you may want to also help them because we are going to be proceeding with some questions to the representative of the applicant. We just want to make sure that they understand the full, excuse me, the full extent of, of the process, okay?
Madam Chair, secretary here, I just want to echo, there's 129 letters of support for this project, and there's nine opposition.
Okay, can we just, thank you, thank you, Mr. Secretary. I just want to go now and talk about the, the project. I want to ask the, the representative of the applicant, given that this is a 2F 5,000 zone, and this is a 10,000-square-foot lot, how many units would be allowed as of right?
I believe four would be as of right if the lot size, if the lot was subdivided.
And if it was not subdivided, how many units?
It is a 2F 5,000 square foot, I apologize, it is a 2F 5,000 lot. That said, that said, Madam Chair, this lot is located about 0.3 miles from the Fields Corner train station.
You know, I'm not, I'm, I'm just asking about the project itself. I'm not ready to go into the traffic stuff, to understand what is allowed, what is allowed as of right. So if it's, if it, zoning is 2,005, 2F 5,000, and the lot is 10,000 square feet, you're saying under a quote worst-case scenario, the subdivision would result in an additional two units to, to the, to, to the neighborhood, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you represent that this is basically a two, two, up till a six-family neighborhood, right?
It is.
I just want to clarify, I just want to make sure my understanding is correct. Okay, so tell us the rationale for why we should be moving up to eight units. You need to also know that this board is not entirely in favor of basement living or, or basement space in the, living space in the basement, especially if there's going to be an extension, a rear extension, and any new construction. So please talk this through with us.
If I could, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Christopher in his office that created the plans, might be best to address this question.
Thank you. And in the meantime, I want to make sure, Mr. Interpreter, do you need time to interpret for your, for, for your clients and for the people on the line that, so that they are understanding what our processes and what the questioning is?
Sure, I probably can't speak for the whole design, but I can go with the.
I, I just, I just want to make sure that you're translating for the residents so that they understand our questions as a board, okay?
Yep.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, business address of 415 Department Avenue, Project Architects. Essentially, we're, we're constructing in addition to the existing two-family building. With that, we decided to use the existing footprint of the building and capture the additional living space in the basement to, to add on to those units one and two. Primarily, the living space for those units will be on the first floor with the bedroom and living space on the first floor, an additional bedroom and a family room in the basement. As far as the unit count, obviously, we, we worked with our, with our clients to, to buy a project that was financially feasible, and we believe that this is an appropriate use of the site. By kids living in the rear portion of the building, we're able to accomplish the parking at grade, which we wanted to get as many vehicles off the street, understanding the concerns of this neighborhood. So we thought that that was an appropriate use. Furthermore, most of the abutting structures are three families that occupy the, the majority of their site. And this building would be similar in that we would be occupying more of our site comparable to what the abutting properties are using. However, at grade, we'll have parking space and a small amount of open space along, a small amount of space for screening and buffering. We've also kept the footprint of the existing building at the street and created the pass-through garage to anchor it to the street, which we feel is an appropriate design choice.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, it is a pretty massive expansion of, from two to 10.
Two to eight.
I mean, to eight, right. Although I gather the original plans had 1,000 square foot, even, even more. Anyway, two to eight. And the, the driveway is a, you know, nice effort to get cars off the street. I would say, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. To say there's 10 workable spaces is being generous. I don't know if Mr. D'Amico ever took a look at it, but there'll have to be a lot of, they'll need, they'll need a traffic cop out there.
Any questions from the board? Is there any thoughts from the BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend it to denial. Mr. Ehrlich, you used the word that I was going to use, it's massive. I mean, it's just too big for us.
Okay. I, I am looking at it, at street view, and it is a handsome existing structure, and I, I can see that this is, makes an attempt at that. However, you know, as we go back to the, the further design and the density, there is, there are a lot of questions. In the meantime, is, is anybody from the mayor's office or elected officials here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Fisa Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We are going on record in support, but we also acknowledge that, you know, this has been a controversial project from the beginning. It has had numerous community meetings and meetings with the civic groups, the Fields Corner Civic Association does main opposed based on concerns that the board is also listing, which is the size of the project. However, we do acknowledge that the applicants have tried to work with their direct abutters who are in support of this project. We were flooded with over 100 letters of support, folks who lived in the immediate surrounding streets, and they were appreciative that they did go down in the number of bedrooms and also bathroom count. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else from any elected officials on with raised hands, speak either in support or in opposition?
None that I can see, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands to speak in support of this project?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is six people that have called in to render support.
Thank you. And please just reminder that if you're calling in, press star 3 so we know of your intention to. of your intention to speak on this project. Anybody else to speak in support of this project? May I have Mr. Translator on the line, please?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Mr. Pham, please, thank you. Is, so let me get the first caller in, put your name and address on the record and tell us the reason for your support or opposition.
Qua, you've been unmuted.
Xin có ai ở đây có muốn chứng nhận là cái dự án này ủng hộ hay là phản đối thì xin bấm sao ba để nói lên những cái sự này.
Thank you. Mr. Translator, please.
Hello?
Is, um.
Yes, we can hear you.
Please can we go back to have a translation of the first call?
I think that was Qua, Madam Chair.
That was Qua speaking in Vietnamese, okay, go ahead.
Hello? My name is Chu Ngoc. Thí dụ anh nghe việc thì để tên với địa chỉ của anh rồi nói những cái gì anh có muốn ủng hộ là phản đối về cái, cái dự án này. Hello, my name is Chu Ngoc. I live at twenty Arcadia Street.
Are you in support, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah. I want to speak support of this project.
Please put your name on the record. Please put your name and address on the record.
Yeah, my name is Chu Ngoc. I live twenty Arcadia Street, apartment one, etc.
Thank you.
M I zero two one, yeah.
Okay, next caller.
My name is Hantung. I live at twenty-five Arcadia Street, Dorchester, M A zero two one two two. I am part of Arcadia Street. I want to speak in support of this project. I support this proposal and believe it will be great addition to community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller.
The Asian. Hello?
Miss Lu, you're unmuted.
Um, yes. Dear members of the zoning board of appeal, appeals. My name is Kim Tui Lee. I live in two five nine Westview Street, Unit O two. Dorchester, M A O two one two two. I am part of the Arcadia Street. I want to speak in support of this project. I support this proposal and believe it will be a great addition to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have Councilor Baker's office. He just raised his hand.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. Due to the overwhelming abutment support, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Caller, you're unmuted.
Hello?
Yes. Please put your name and address to the record.
Yes, this is Tommy Tran. I live thirty-three Pickens Street, Dorchester, zero two one two two. I'm part local community of Yukona. I want to speak support this project. I support this project and believe it's a great addition for community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Qua, you have been unmuted. Qua, you have been unmuted.
Can we move to, can we move to the next caller?
Yes, ma'am. Qua, you have been unmuted.
Không hai một hai hai, tôi sẽ, tôi sẽ bỏ cho số cho dự án số nhà hai mươi ba, Arcadia Street.
I wanted to translate that. She said, let me ask her name again. I didn't get in the beginning. Cô tên gì mà ơi, địa chỉ nào?
Yeah, tôi là Lan Nguyễn. Tôi là Lan Nguyễn nha chú ạ. Tôi ở số nhà hai mươi bốn, Arcadia Street, Dorchester.
Her name is Lan Nguyen and she lives at twenty-four Arcadia and she just want to call in to support this project.
Thank you. So we, can we determine how many? Because we have, you know, I, I want to give this information to the translator. So, Mr. Pham, just to let you know that generally when we have a lot of call-ins, be limited to a certain number in support or in opposition. So I would like to close any call-ins in, on this in support because I think we have a fair representation of the level of support that this project has. So if you could please let the community know that fact, that would be very helpful to us.
Sure, I will relay that statement for the callers. Qua đây xin thông dịch là bà ta đã nói là cái dự án này sẽ không nhận những cái cái câu phản đối là ủng hộ nữa tại vì bà ta đã nghe đủ mọi người đã mới nói rồi thì xin cảm ơn. Motion.
Thank you. Just to make one, and one last request, is anybody here to speak in opposition? Mr. Translator, can you ask people maybe calling in if, if they can unmute themselves or if they can not take down their hands by pressing star three, given your recent comment?
Okay. Ở đây có ai phản đối cái dự án này thì xin bấm sao ba. Đây là dưa cái tay của mình lên để nói, cái này là cho phản đối.
Thank you. Miss, Miss Ambassador, tell us what we are expecting. I think we've kind of heard from everybody. I just don't know who call-in user nine and fifty-two are.
Caller nine already spoke in support. Caller fifty-two already spoke in support. Joe is from Councilor Baker's office.
Right.
Commented. As far as I can see, there are no other raised hands to comment on this project.
Okay, given all that information, the in, input from the BPDA, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a BPDA design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
I too am in support, opposed, so the motion doesn't carry. I'd like to entertain another motion that, because this, this motion basically denies the eight residential units. So I would like to give motion on the record for a smaller number of units, given the fact that the neighbor, the unit number ranging size from two to six. And I would almost like to entertain a motion that, that eliminates any basement, basement living.
Um, well, I'm just going to make motion to deny without prejudice by ask. I mean, there clearly is a lot of community support. So I would just ask that they go back to the drawing board and reduce the, the size. I'm reluctant to exactly say what, what steps they should take, but it, it, it's too massive the way it is. So that's my motion.
Any, is there a second to that?
In the entire room.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to denial without prejudice. Please, Mr. Translator, please let everybody know it was denied without prejudice. And please let them know too that with the denial without prejudice, the applicant can come in within a year. And the recommendation from this board is that they come in with a smaller total number of units and that there be no basement living space.
Sure. Bà ta muốn nói là cái dự án này đã được bố để ý phản đối và cái anh, anh xây nhà này sẽ không được. Bà nếu mà có thể trở lại trong một năm, người ta có thể đưa một cái dự án khác ra. Đó là sáu unit hay là xuống dưới hay là nhỏ hơn và không có ở những cái, cái basement giữa nhà. Motion.
Thank you. Can we get to the next case?
Sure. Case BOA nine six eight, six seven nine, seven oh seven Walk Hill Street. This is to raise the existing garage in rected three-story building with four residential units and three parking spaces. The violation is Article sixty, section eight. A multifamily residential dwelling, four units, is a forbidden use. Article sixty, section thirty-seven, parking requirement is insufficient.
Yeah.
Article sixty, section nine, the lot size to erect a dwelling unit is insufficient. Article sixty, section twenty-nine, minimum lot width requirement is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the minimum lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, section nine, the height requirement is excessive in stories. Article sixty, section nine, the height requirement is excessive in feet. Article sixty, section nine, open space requirement is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the side yard setback is insufficient. Article sixty, section nine, the rear yard setback is insufficient. And Article sixty, section nine, the lot area required per dwelling unit is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Attorney Jeff Drago. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of fifteen Broad Street. Just a point of clarification, I'm going to be sitting for the next three hearings. Just for Miss Ambassador, hopefully that makes things easier from a technology standpoint. But I represent on this case at seven oh seven Walk Hill Street in Matapan, Willie Mandrell, who's here, he's the owner on the zoom, on the call, and Peter Baratash, the architect. The proposal is to, and you can see the rendering in front of you, we're proposing, is to raise an existing garage. It's a, pretty much a, a site that hasn't been used in, in a long time. It's only used for parking. It's lighted. And to raise the existing garage and erect a building with four residential condominium units and three parking spaces will also be, because right now it's, if Madam Ambassador could just go on some of the site pictures, you will see that everything, there's a massive curb cut. We're restoring one on-street spot. That's an aerial, if you don't mind going to the next slide, just so the board can see. Should be one more. You can see part of the curb cut there, one more slide. Thank you. So that's a very large curb cut. Half of that will be put back, about ten feet will be able to restore a spot. Just to go.
Counselor, can you please then speak to how this is in, in, how this fits into the neighborhood and then speak, jump to the violations?
Sure, so there, there is a mix of different buildings. Next to us is a three-family. There's condo buildings, four to six, up and down the street. There's some twos, it's in a two F five thousand area. Our lot size is three thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. And we actually have been working on this for the better part of a year and making changes based on feedback. We actually deferred at the last hearing and are working with the Wellington Hill Neighborhood Association.
Listen, Counselor, we are, we'd like to just get to the meat of the project. We will hear about your community process, as you know, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and representatives from the community who may be on this call. You, we, relying on your technical expertise, talk about the violations that have been garnered by this proposal.
Sure, I'll go over the violations now, Madam Chair. So the use, it's a four-unit building. It's down from five. Two F is allowed, so.
As we always start off every project, we don't look at the reduction by the developer. We are looking at the base zoning and how this compares to the base zoning. So I know you are on for the next three cases. If you could keep that in mind, please.
Okay, so it's a two F district and we're proposing four units, a variance for use. Minimum lot area is required, five thousand. We have three thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. There was a mis-sighting of additional lot area. It is not applicable over two units. So that was an incorrect violation. Rear yard violation is also removed because of the shallow lot exception. We have an eighty-foot deep lot, which brings us to a twenty-nine-foot rear setback. And thirty would be allowed. Twenty is what's required under the code under the shallow lot exception. So that also was met. Minimum lot width, forty-five would be required. We're proposing thirty-nine, seeking a variance for that. Point eight F A R is what's allowed. We're proposing one point four two. Height in feet, we're proposing thirty-nine feet, six inches, thirty-five is what the code allows. So we're seeking a variance for that. We're proposing three and a half stories, two and a half stories is what's allowed. Open space, we have two hundred, eight hundred per dwelling unit would be allowed. We've got two hundred. Minimum side yard, what we, we have it on the left side, ten is required. We have one foot, two inches on the right.
Can you please, can you please hold on for a minute, Steph? Steph, could you please get to the rendering so we can see what this looks like on the site? Go ahead, Counselor, while Stephanie pulls up the, the appropriate.
Yes, and then parking, so we, we do have three, four would be required, but we are creating one spot. I can go over the floor plans, Madam Chair. The exterior, just the three parking spaces. I don't know if the site plan we already passed, if you want to see that, the three spaces are in the rear of the property. There's also a trash enclosure that you can see fenced in alongside for our receptacles. We are proposing four units, so three three-bedroom units at a thousand nineteen square foot average and one two-bedroom at nine hundred and twelve square feet. The first floor is unit one, which is a three-bedroom, one bath at nine hundred and fifty. Unit two on the second floor is a three-bedroom, one bath. It also has a deck and that's nine hundred and fifty square feet. And the third and fourth layer, the levels have bi-level units, so up and down. Unit three and four on the third floor have living area and kitchen. That's a nine hundred and twelve square foot, two bed, one bath. And the two beds and one bath are on the fourth floor for that unit. And then on the third floor, we have the lower level for unit four, which has a living area, kitchen and deck. That's a one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven square foot, three-bedroom, one bath with the three bedrooms and one bath on the fourth floor. These are all condominiums, just if I haven't mentioned that yet.
Okay. Counselor, can you please stay on, on this? There's some, in the meantime, Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Ranging's rather adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, Secretary here.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have seventeen letters of support and one letter of opposition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I am Fisa Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Had several meetings with the Wellington Hill Neighborhood Association and then also they do have the support of several of their abutters as referenced by Mark. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Kimbells' office. We would also like to go on record in support. I think the only concern that we heard from Wellington Hill was the last presentation they saw didn't have stamped plans. They liked the, the newest rendition. Just wanted to make sure that, I think the parking in the back was for sure going to happen and that wouldn't get changed.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jac Sully from Council Savi George's office. We would like to go on record in support under the condition that the developers uphold the agreement with the Wellington Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else can speak, either in support or in opposition? Any raised hands?
Ateem, are you unmuted? Hi, um, this is Fatima Alislam, Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council. The council supports the Wellington Hill Neighborhood Association's position and agrees that so long as the plans are stamped and actually show the parking in the back as well as full landscaping. Thank you.
Any, any other ran, ha- hands raised? Madam Chair, all the hands are raised. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BBVA design review.
Second.
Tiber?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine nine two, seven four one, sixty-six to sixty-six B Fondale Road. This is to seeking to erect a three-story residential building with three units and three parking spaces. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, design parking spaces and sizes. Article sixty-seven, section thirty-three, conformity with an existing street wall alignment, no model, no modal alignment survey is provided. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article sixty-seven, section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient open space per unit. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient side yard setback. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insuffi- insufficient, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Call, are you unmuted? Jeff, are you on the line?
On it. Oh, I'm back on. For some reason I was muted. Can you hear me now, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Jeff Drago again, of Drago and Toscano with an address of fifteen Broad Street, uh representing Tom Falcoochi and his family. Um, and also Arthur Chu is the architect on the line at sixty-six dash sixty-six B Fondale Road. Um, again, this proposal is directed, three-story condominium building, three units and six interior six interior parking spaces on an existing vacant lot. This project, just to point out, was before this board and deferred to get um a better design. Uh, to get a better design.
No problem. Bye.
Can we please mute everybody else on this call?
And we came back with the, uh, based on the uh board's ask for a design more conducive to the area. And uh, we can show those if Madam Ambassador puts those up. This zoning district is a three F, four thousand. Our lot size is three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Um, just to go over the zoning violations. Uh, the lot size uh required is four thousand. We're at three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Additional lot size, uh, two thousand, we have zero. Uh, FAR is point eight. We're at one point three-three. Open space, eight hundred, we're at three hundred and sixteen. Uh, front yard, twenty feet, we're at seven. Side yard, ten feet, we have three foot one on each side. And our rear yard, forty, we have seven foot eight, but on the upper floors, we pulled back, we have thirteen. Um, to go over the the floor plans for the board. The basement only contains sprinkler and utility room. These are all duplex units. They're all two-bedroom. On the first floor, we have our six parking spaces, three of which are tandem. Um, there are separate entrances to all three units on the first floor as well. On the second floor, unit one is a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath that are contained on the third floor. On the first floor is the kitchen, living room and a half-bath. Unit two is twelve hundred and thirty-six square foot, same layout. Kitchen, living room, half-bath on the second. And then a two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath on the third floor. And unit three is a twelve hundred and eighty-two square foot um unit with kitchen, living room, half-bath on second floor. And on the third, third floor, it's two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath. I know we passed some of the uh proposed renderings of what the exterior is. We hope this is more in line what the board was looking for from our last, we showed a previous rendering and then a new rendering, elevation slide.
Yeah, now, so this Fondale is more of a family neighborhood, so you're, you don't have a, any three bedrooms in there? Everything is two-bedroom?
Cor- correct, but that was part of our modification with, we actually had three bedrooms. In working with our butters, we reduced three bedrooms to two bedrooms based on their feedback and increased that pushback as well in the rear that they asked for and added some decks. These are all based on what the butters had asked for over the process manager.
And this lot currently is not used for accessory parking? It's not needed as accessory parking to anything?
It was not. It was used more of like construction vehicle parking and just personal vehicle.
Excellent. Okay, um. So you've went, you've gone through all the violations, you've gone through the parking. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, better than before.
Good. Yes. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, uh, Secretary.
Are there any raised hands in support?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. Just a question. Um, I have a letter from Bob D'Amico at the BTD. Uh, he said that sixty-six and sixty-six B Fondale is, he's opposed because all the spaces are only sixteen feet. The letter was dated July twenty-seventh of this year.
They're just sixteen feet? Can we go ahead um, just to hear if there are any um any voices to speak in support of this?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jack Dudley from Council Savi George's office. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe Coppinger from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project. We conducted a butters meeting back in early November of two thousand nineteen. At that time, uh, we did have a low turnout, but the councilor's staff at the time um did request for uh additional parking to be made in the project due to concerns in the neighborhood of uh, a lack of parking in the neighborhood, especially with the uh you know, the bus lane on Washington Street does not have, uh, it restricts parking throughout the day. Um, they were able to make those adjustments, um, as well as work with, uh, you know, director butters, and I believe they did support uh send in letters of support as of today. Um, that being said, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have other raised hands.
Thank you. Can we?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Caitlin Fleischman on behalf of City Councilor Ricardo Arroyo. The council would like to go on record and support this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have three letters of support and three letters of opposition.
Thank you. Any raised hands in opposition?
Madam Chair, I see no additional raised hands.
Okay. Um, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna go motion to approve with uh BBVA design review.
I'll second.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last, last case of the day. Calling BOA nine nine three, nine zero four, one oh four to one oh six Warren Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a seven-family dwelling with five parking spaces. The violation is Article ten, section one, limitation of area of accessory uses. Article fifty-one, section nine, the lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the height is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, fifty-one dash fifty-six R four, R Street parking location. And Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, R Street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, can you hear me again?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address, with Drago and Toscano with an address of fifteen Broad Street, representing City Realty. I know we have Josh Fetterman on the call. Um, and uh, Tanya Carrier from Tulsa Design is the architect for project at one oh four dash one oh six Warren Street. The proposal, we're seeking to change the occupancy uh from a two-family to a seven-family with five parking spaces on site.
Counselor, can you, can you halt for a second, Stephanie? Can you please go through the drawings while he's speaking? Thank you, counselor. Go ahead.
Sure. Um, we're keeping the existing building and building on it. Um, so that will include side additions and a fourth-story addition, but also completely renovating um the building, which is in dire need of that as well. This is a multifamily residential, so the existing building is two. Everything around us is a large apartment style. The lot size is six thousand seven hundred and forty-four square feet. And um, just to go over the layout, so the unit.
Sorry, is this an MFR one or two?
This is just MFR one.
It's an MFR one, okay. And what is your proposed FAR?
One point two-four.
Okay.
Um, our unit breakdown, so we have six two-bedroom units at eight hundred and ninety square feet. And we have one three-bedroom unit at sixteen hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Um, our, just to go over the the layout, so in our basement will only house storage units, sixteen bicycle spaces and repair area for bikes, and our electrical and sprinkler and elevator. As we go up to the first floor, we have our main entrance lobby and a trash enclosed area. We also have um unit one, which is the two-bedroom, two-bath. Unit two, two-bedroom, one-bath. And then we go up to the second floor, which houses units three and four. That's eight hundred fifty-nine square uh foot, two-bed, one-bath, and that has a deck, a rear deck. Unit four is a nine hundred and seventy-five square foot, two-bed, two-bath with a deck. Uh, then we go up to the third floor, unit five and six, eight hundred and fifty-nine square foot, two-bed, one-bath with a deck. Unit six, nine hundred and seventy-five square feet, two-bed, two-bath with a deck. And then unit seven is on the fourth floor. That's our larger unit, three-bed, three-bath with balconies, and that's a thousand six hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
Okay, counselor, can you hold on for a minute? Steph, can you please the drawing that shows the parking and how the parking is laid out?
Madam, Madam Chair, it's Secretary here. Um, Bob D'Amico also commentant on this one. Uh, one oh four, one oh six Warren Street. He was opposed due to front yard parking and all the spaces are only eighteen feet.
And it's sorry, the, the spaces are eighteen feet?
That's correct.
Thank you. So, counselor, Steph, why are you pulling up the drawings?
I think we just passed it, Madam Chair. You might, that's the better one, right there. It can show the parking.
This one right here?
Yes, you can see all the spaces. So we were not cited for front yard. We pulled it to the side. Um, we were asked to create more parking um to go along with this as we went through the community process. So that's how we got to the five and we were asked to keep the building. Um, and we wanted to maintain ample green space, so this was a way to to get all of the requests in. Um, parking, green space, pull it as far as we could from the front.
So tell us how the parking works. Does that mean that you have two curb cuts?
No, um, you would go over, there's like a paver in the front and you would go right over that. There's one curb cut on the left-hand side. So the the parking space, there's one on the left. You can see that backs right out. The other one is tandem, and then there's three across on the right. They would all go over that front. Drive over the front permi- uh, pavers and go out um the one curb cut. That's existing now. There's an existing.
Well, doesn't mean that it was legal.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. It was just there. We believe it is because there was parking in the back, so. It was, it was a garage in the left.
And so you're, you're knocking down that side entrance because that's, that driveway currently looks pretty narrow.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So I, I just, you know, we're, having worked in Brighton for many years, I wanna know how this is going to prevent somebody from actually parking in the front yard. And have you looked at other options for, for the parking?
Um, I know uh Josh Fetterman is on the call. There, there's a way to unmute him. I think he would be better suited on that question.
Miss Ambassador, can you please get Josh on?
Hello, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
This is Josh Fetterman, uh, three twenty Washington Street in Brookline. Um, to answer your question, when we looked at the parking scenario currently, as you noted, there's a very narrow rear driveway that leads to a one-car garage. And the current uh setting, as you note, although it's not uh ideal, there's a paved front yard area where cars have been parking. So we studied a couple options. We looked at kind of getting towards the back of the lot for cars, but that narrow uh condition led us to look more closely at sort of parking along the sides of the building. And being that Warren is a very busy street during the community process, the uh discussion came up around room to allow for some pickup drop-off or delivery. And this, this arrangement helps to also meet that need. So uh after some deliberation, we, we settled on here and it was, uh, it was received pretty well.
Well, you, I mean, you've, you and your um attorney have been before this board often enough to know that this board is not, does not look kindly at any front yard parking in any way, shape or form. And I am looking at the existing condition on, on the map, and you're right. But it doesn't mean it's the best design form or anything else. And it doesn't mean that it was um by any means reviewed by this board. Um, and so since this is new, new work, new construction, new addition of floors, um, that we look to you to actually, you know, figure something out, something else that's different. Um, but I just put that down as a statement um for the record for now. Uh, Mr. Olick, please, both of you stay on. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Uh, the plans for the building are, are fine. Uh, the parking is a problem.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the court? May I have elected officials go on record, uh, representative from the Mayor's Office first? Go on record, um, speaking on this project, either on.
Madam Chair, members of the board, conundrum with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, we conducted a butters meeting back in October, October ninth. Uh, were residents in attendance, didn't raise any serious concerns. They went on to the uh Brent Nelson Improvement Association and met with them several times. Uh, the crux of those conversations was mostly around parking. Um, the Civic felt that there should be more parking added despite its proximity to the green line. Um, so they worked out uh those issues with the Civic and then received support from the BAI. They were in conversations with the Brighton Marine Hospital across the street and also had extensive conversations with the Franciscan Children's Hospital next door regarding construction and other matters. So we feel that they, they've taken the appropriate steps to address concerns and like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Um, any re- any other representatives from elected officials on, on this call?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have nine letters of support and one letter of opposition.
Thank you. Did the opposition letter state that the opposition was big?
Uh, give me a second, Madam Chair.
Here, it's Jeff Hampton from the BPDA. Uh, is this from seven units or eight units? Is this from seven units or eight units? Because on all the ZBA documentation, it says seven, but I had noticed on the last slide that they had a proposed eight-unit when we were looking at the parking.
Now, that was a typo, Jeff, this is Jeff Drago.
Perfect, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks for the clarification.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, the opposition basically was off-street parking, multi, multi-unit brick apartment that also lacks parking ratio, yard space.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask the applicant a question?
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Eulick. Anybody else to speak with raised hands in support or in opposition?
Yes, I just want to let you know that I live on Gordon Street. I've lived here for over 10 years and I've.
Please first put your name and address on the record.
Sure, my name is Ed Gelman, 92 Gordon Street.
Thank you. And tell us if you're in support or in opposition and what it's based on.
Well, I'm definitely in support of this project. I think the current structure that is there right now has been an eyesore ever since I've, I've lived here. I've lived on Gordon Street for over 10 years now and have driven by this property many, many times. And I think it would be a pleasant change to see something like this go up over there.
Thank you.
I have Wang Yi from Council of Breeden's office.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
This office, just want to go on the record, the council would like to go on record in support.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Wayne Yeh, for Council of Breeden.
Nice to meet you, welcome.
Thank you.
Next caller, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Annabelle, you're unmuted.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. We definitely would be open to having BPDA design review on, on the parking. That was one of our issues, but we did have issues with people in the area that did want a pulling in the front for delivery so that they wouldn't be parking on Warren Street because it is a very busy street. The property is consistent, the property next door is 5,000 square feet with 23,000 gross living area. This is much smaller. It is the parking that we, you know, we'd definitely be open to a BPDA design review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Ms. Ambassador?
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Eulick, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Fetterman and Mr. Drago. You actually have 10 feet along the left side between the edge of the building and the plot, lot line. Is there a reason why you didn't think of using the driveway and doing the parking in the rear?
Attorney Drago is muted, so is Josh Fetterman.
Jeff or Josh, can you please respond?
I, I know this is Jeff Drago. I know it was, it came down to the open space by keeping this building. Sorry, go ahead.
I can jump into Jeff, Mr. Eulick. We did look at it and we found when we got to the rear of the property, the amount of space we had back there would limit to just a couple spaces. So we would have to deal with the tight driveway condition and then a couple spaces. And then when we took it into consideration with the other comments we got about creating usable open space, which through our landscape architect, we programmed the backyard, I think, very nicely so that residents could use it. Like I said, that was considered early, but then through this series of feedback, we sort of made some trade-offs to end up where we did now.
And for clarification, do you have a roof deck on this property?
There's no roof deck. Most of the units have private balconies and the roof is just for AC condensers only.
Okay. So given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review. Take it and see if there's a better solution for the parking.
I'll second that.
Wait a second, maybe just have basically, maybe we just need to be far more prescriptive on just eliminating parking in the front yard on, think about that.
That's fine.
Yes, is there a second?
Second, turn around.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, you're off the line, so please make sure that it comes back to us, the board final arbiter. There should be anything that sounds whatsoever with good care in mind.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.